Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners to Order on this Tuesday, April 22nd at 8:30 a.m. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda today? Hearing or seeing none? Oh.
I would like to say, since we have a public hearing at nine, if we could maybe move item, let's see, what is it? Item number?
Seven.
Seven?
Mm-hmm.
In there, into that space, because it's a short item.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That sounds great. We'll move item seven up before item four. Anything else? Commissioner Campbell?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Motion support. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's move on to public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public wishing to speak before the board, please address the board. And we generally keep comments limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment this morning? And please just sign in and, yeah.
Well, as I'm signing in, I will state my name, Amy Jane Wilfert, Cook County resident since 1989, Forest Service employee for 34 years. And I live on the old Ski Hill property. I built a place there in 1994, bought land in 1994, and eventually built my home there, small home. Moved in in 2000. It was a stair-step process, and I worked very hard on it. But the reason I'm here is I've been involved with the old Ski Hill property since 1997. I've heard different discussions on it. There've been different people on the board, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm here because I'm real concerned about the John Sheaf property and the development that could go on if you allow him access on the old Ski Hill road. Now, I don't want you to think that it's, I'm thinking NIMBY, not in my backyard. I'm not. I'm a natural resource, sources biologist at heart. I know about water resources. I know about, you know, erosion control. And I also recognize that he needs access to his property, but there was also a discussion on giving him, trading him, and that hasn't happened. And I'm just scratching my head as to why that hasn't happened yet, if indeed that's what the board wants to do. And then taking it a step further, I, and a nature lover, I do hug my trees, but that you've got a gem there on that hillside in this county. And I grew up in southern Minnesota where, as you know, it's been denuded because of farmland for various reasons. I understand that. It's a toxic environment down there. And when I talk to my friends and family, when I go to southern Minnesota, New Ulm to be exact, they just love Grand Marais, and it's not because of the Boundary Waters. They love the town and looking up at that hillside. Now, I'm probably getting a little carried away with that comment, but you have a real gem with that hillside. And there was a scar that was left on that hillside from Matt Garrett Schlager, and I know Matt very well. And I don't want to see any more scars on that hillside. And I recognize the importance of increasing the tax base in this county, but you've got to also recognize that we have limited land to develop, and we're never going to get to where we want to get in this county. That's the way I see it, as far as paying for everything. I'm kind of rambling right now, but I was hoping some of my friends were going to support me today, but I was told that this was a silent meeting, that I, I mean, not so much silent, but like I couldn't comment, so I'm not really that prepared. But anyway, that's where I am at right now. So I'll be quiet now and write down my phone number here, so.
Well, thank you.
Anyway, thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you, Amy. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment this morning? Then I'll close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any, which includes our claims, minutes, resignation of Alex Esser, approved voluntary transfer of Alyssa Shushariba to the Highway Clerk, appoint Pete Mott to the revolving load and fund committee. Is there any item a commissioner would like to pull to discuss further? Then is there a motion to approve the consent?
Also move.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Motion support. Any further discussion there? Hearing or seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that moves us on to item seven, which is actually 3.5 MIS. We have approval to purchase a server.
Good morning.
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 Per policy, capital purchases over $5,000 come back to the board even when they're approved in the budget, and this is the case here with this one. So this is a regular replacement of a Dell server, and it has been budgeted for. The requesting purchase price is $5,950, so just over 67 cents. And it is, in addition to regular replacement, the regular replacement schedule that we have for servers, we rotate them every five years, five-year lifecycle. It moves us forward in our server consolidation process. And so through moving virtual machines off of other ones and putting them on to this server, just moving data around from different servers, this will actually be taking the place of two servers. And so the total number of servers that we'll be budgeting for will go down again this year, and that trend continues year over year. As we push more things to the cloud, we still have a need for on-prem data, and this is just a continuation of both the regular replacement schedule, but also the trend towards server consolidation and reducing the total number of servers that we have here on-prem in the county. That's pretty much it. I'd stand for questions if there are any.
Thank you. Any questions for Ron? Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rowan, I'm sort of amazed you couldn't find a provider that you could negotiate at a price below the 5,000, so you wouldn't be subject to the board.
Yeah. Well, our budgeted price for servers has been 5,800 a year, or per unit, five servers. So we're allocating that much money every year on a five-year rotation. And as you can see, it's held pretty accurate. The quote that we got from Dell is still only, you know, roughly $150 over. And with Dell, I mean, it's kind of the specs that we need and the unit that we want, and so, you know, within $150 of the budgeted prices. Dell's a pretty big company to nickel and dime with for an individual server.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the purchase of the Dell PowerEdge server at the quoted price of $5,950.67.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Is there a motion? Is there support?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Motion and support. Any further discussion there? Appreciate the continued consolidation and efficiencies and the good work you do.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. If you want to stay there for just a sec, I think, sure, Mr. Campbell was.
Yeah, we couldn't let you go, get away without recognizing your service, so if you kindly step forward here, we'd like to say thank you.
Boy. Trying to catch you unawares, but.
You did.
Uh-oh.
I was sitting on it.
Yeah. We've had conversations about Canada geese, just for the public and those that are attending here, and there's a lot of things that we learn from nature, and so, given those conversations and given the significance of the characteristics of what nature teaches us and what we can learn and how we serve people, we'd like to recognize your service. Presented to Rowan Watkins, April 22nd, 2025, with deep appreciation for service above and beyond the call of the wild. Cook County, Minnesota, interim county administrator, October 2024 through March 2025. Thank you for your leadership. You have done more than lead, you have inspired. And in that context of Canada geese, the metaphor, should a Canada goose become injured and fall from the formation, there are those who will drop back to assist, demonstrating their strong commitment and willingness to help in time of need. And Rowan, if you'd like to come and rip the, actually, you can just take that corner over there, I think, to lick the paper up. I'd like to present you with this in recognition, and then also over there on the corner there is a card from staff for your appreciation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Rowan.
Appreciate it very much.
In the back here is a sleeve that has information about the artist. He lived to be 100 years old, recognized for his artwork, especially when it came to birds and waterfall. He's an artist that grew up in Iowa. He's been recognized for many, many things over the years, and certainly, his story is a story that's inspiring as well. So the history of the painting, this is a limited edition signed painting that was done by him, and watercolor, and then there's the copy of the recognition that's back there as well, so.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rowan.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
It's beautiful.
That's a nice painting, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. That was very touching and very appropriate and much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate everybody's expression and participation in that, so.
Well, even with the adjustment to the agenda, we still have solid 15 minutes here before a public hearing.
The highway.
Should we?
Highway.
Okay. Let's move on to the Highway Department. That's jumping to item six on our agenda. First one is 6A Authorization to Purchase Replacement Compact Track Loader.
Good morning.
Morning.
We'll go fast. About 15 minutes, we got lots. Actually, I'll let Matt talk about the skid steer.
Yeah, so everyone's familiar with our replacement schedule. Next on the list is a compact track loader. We had budgeted $114,000 to replace it. Quote came in at $111,000. It's on a 15-year replacement schedule, so it's due for replacement now. And yeah, entertain any questions about this purchase or the replacement schedule in general.
Any questions? Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So my only question is, in looking at it and just helping us to understand, when you look at the deluxe cab, the deluxe cab and what that includes, price compares into the basic cab?
Yeah, certain items are fairly, I mean, part of it's just marketing, but for heavy machinery in particular, it's not like you have a thousand different options. This is just pretty standard options on this particular machine.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any motions?
I'll make the motion to approve the skid steer.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. On to item B is calcium chloride.
Yeah, so this is one of our annual contracts we have for calcium chloride. This will be the second year, first year officially, but second year that we've really been more diligent about establishing what roads we put them on. So if you remember, we have a calcium chloride policy now, and that's what we follow, the costs with that particular material. You know, we're escalating to a point where we just couldn't keep up with it to do all of our roads, and so that's where we started to scale back. And so the low bidder on this one was EnviroTech. Our budget was 200,000, so you can see we're coming in, what is that, $125 under budget, which is great. So does anybody have any questions about that?
Commissioner Sullivan?
What are you going to do with that $125?
I don't know. Treat it another 10 feet.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to EnviroTech Services LLC for $199,875 for the application of 125,000 gallons of liquid calcium chloride on county roads.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Motion and support. Any further discussion? Please?
Maybe in our phone conversation yesterday, it'd be beneficial for the public to understand how that's actually applied. In other words, what we do and what we get for that amount of money.
Sure. So, you know, we can double-check the policy, but that determines which roads, and so we look at traffic count, road geometry, that type of stuff. As far as how it gets applied, if you can all picture a big tanker truck, basically, the bigger the better in your mind, and that has a sprayer on the back, basically, so it's got a bunch of nozzles on the back, and that just slowly drives down a road, and that applies the solution to the road. In a perfect world, we would get out there and grade the road, which we try and do on most of our roads, spray it, and then we'd actually come back and keep turning that over a few times. So we do our best with that. We're not able to do it a lot, but what we do is at least put a cap on there. And so that helps not only with the road stability, but also, you know, keeps the dust down. A lot of people think of this as dust control, which is one small part of it. So just big tanker truck, sprayer on the back. We also have one of our staff follow that truck to, you know, change the application rate if we need to, depending on what road we're on.
Adjust the width as well.
Right. Yeah. So, you know, maybe if it's a less busy road, that width narrows down, so, you know, we kind of hit the middle of the road. If it's a busier road, you know, might widen out a bit. And obviously, this is only on gravel roads.
And a reminder too, that it's not just dust control, it also holds the road together. So as roads get more and more traffic, calcium chloride actually keeps the road a more solid road.
Yeah. And, Mr. Chair, as a follow-up to that, just that for the public, that we're not just buying a product, we're buying the application, and if we were to try to purchase the equipment to do that, it would, it wouldn't make sense at all. So when we look at that figure, it's a service that's provided that we monitor, and that's what's included in that cost.
Right. Yeah, we, yeah, we do not have the equipment to do that. So we could incorporate it into the plan if you guys would like us to, but I'm imagining, no.
Yeah, thank you. Good imagination.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Any motions?
I already made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for keeping me on track. That was for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Casts unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to 6C is the aggregate stockpile.
Wonderful. So this is our gravel crushing contract, and so this year is Louis Dick and Sons. Our budget for this was $150,000, and so this came in at $144,000, so under budget again, which is great. We'll be crushing 18,000 cubic yards of Class 1, and I believe this year it's West End and East End, correct?
Yep. Irish Creek Pit up off the O'Hood Trail, and then Dog Tired Pit off the Stubble Trail.
Right. So, any questions?
Looks like not. Any motions this time?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve, to award the contract to Louis Ustick and Sons for $144,000 for crushing 18,000 cubic yards.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously there as well.
Commissioner?
Please.
Just, this is a question that was asked by me, of me, and I said, you should get the answer from the engineer, and so I'm going to ask you now.
Okay.
Is sand nothing more than ground-up little stones?
In the simplest of terms, yes. But we can have a bigger conversation about sand if you want. Maybe another time.
So the question was, why don't we just grind up our stones?
Ah, it's more complicated than that. The simple, short answer, I think, for now, is there sand in the county? It's just dirty. And opening a wash plant is incredibly expensive. There's the short answer.
Good enough. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We're still ahead.
Yeah, jeez Louise, we're still ahead here. Let's see, uh...
Not much small here.
Maybe let's, uh... Let's see how far, uh... Let's ju, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. If it's all right with the board, I'd like to hit item 5D. That's the auditor budget calendar.
That, it's possible that that's a longer discussion.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll take it back then.
It's up to the board, but you've been reading my mind. Yeah, yeah.
Well, then we'll not tackle that right now. We'll move on to, what's a short one here? Possibly human services if Allison is available. It sounds like she might be on her way, or maybe just available. Otherwise, all the other discussion items.
Late vehicles?
Look, that could be, sure. Should we shoot for that? Brooke, would you like to?
That's going to be a long one.
That's going to be a long, oh, psych. Sorry. That's going to be a long one, too.
We're not going to let Brooke get by that quick.
How about if we take a break?
Well, Allison's on her way, and it's about a one-minute walk, so.
This is where we should have that background.
The Jeopardy music?
Yeah.
Hi, Allison. Thank you. Come on up. Yeah.
Come on down.
So.
Watching upstairs, and I'm like, I could be quick, hopefully, if you want me to come down.
Well, apologies for the disjointed meeting here. For everyone's awareness, we're on item 11, Human Resources, and there's just one item, the approval of job description and job grade updates. Take it away, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
I kind of like ran down the stairs.
I'll take a breath.
I know, there's like the, like the little lag. Good morning. So we continue our, we're almost done, almost done with our job description review process. So out of the four remaining positions to review, two of them are bringing, brought forth to you today. So the two positions that have gone through the whole process, and we have some recommended changes, include the Executive Administrative Assistant. This would be the Executive Administrative Assistant for the Administrator's Office. There's also a similarly named role for Public Health Human Services. This position includes an updated job description and a recommended change in job grade from a 140 to a 160. The other position includes our Sheriff's Technician position over in the Sheriff's Department. So I'll give a little more background on this one. So the changes for this one include updated job description, but actually, we're creating, instead of revising one job description, which is currently the, kind of the structure of the Sheriff's Technician, is we're actually creating a career ladder, and we're going to split kind of the one position into a one and a two. And this is at the recommendation of DDA, and also supported by our Sheriff's Department and our Sheriff, Pat Eliason. So we currently have two individuals filling the role of a Sheriff's Technician with, he was approved on the consent agenda, with one of them eventually transitioning out, and we'll have to recruit. So given the years of experience with the current incumbents and the tasks and functions that they're able to accomplish and do, that is only because they've been in that role for several years. Now, we're going to have to recruit for that position. I'll post it later if we approve the job description. If we recruit and bring someone into that position, most often, we're not going to find someone that's going to be able to actually complete all of the duties of, say, a normal Sheriff's Technician based on what our current staff are able to do. So by creating a one and a two, the two can reflect the current capabilities, experience that have accumulated with the current staff, but we would bring in, recruit, most likely fill a one position, so they don't have many of the same level of responsibilities, level of authority, but they would learn and eventually can transition to that two position. So that seemed like a very appropriate move for this position. So we're creating a Sheriff's Technician 1 and 2. Both job descriptions are included. The Sheriff's Technician 1 would remain where it's currently graded at a 160, and given the higher level of duties with a Sheriff's Technician 2, that grade would move from a 160 to a 170.
All right. Yeah, please.
Just for the listening public, could you just do a brief, what does a Sheriff's Technician do? Just, just like, no, no, just two or three of the little things that they do. Do they bring the coffee in the morning? Do they start the car for the sheriff? Do they?
Yeah. I don't believe they do any of that. At least that's not incorporated into their job description. So they do, so they do, I'm going to look at the job descriptions, too. So they do a lot of the administrative background work and processing for the department. So they do work with citations, search warrants, reporting, excuse me, processing, recording, civil process papers. So I think they work closely with, you know, all of the processes that eventually feed into the work that the Attorney's Office does. You know, they assist the deputies, the investigator, and all of their work. They do help resolve, set up technical features, software programs that they have to maintain. They do work with permit to carry, permit to acquire and transfer firearm applications and permits, various agencies in terms of record searches, evidence keeping. So they do, they do a lot of, there's a lot of work. It's pretty complex, from what I understand. And it's a very unique position. So when we have DDA reviewing the descriptions, there's not always going to be those apples and apples comparisons between other counties, and this is one of those like apples-to-oranges situations, is that our Sheriff's Technician positions are very unique to Cook County and aren't comparable to other roles where there may be multiple people, and those tasks are separated between multiple people in other organizations.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
More than enough.
Any other questions for Allison? Any motions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend the approval of the job description updates to both the Executive Administrative Assistant and the Sheriff's Technician 1 and 2, along with the grade changes.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion, is there support?
Well, I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I know we've got like 30 seconds here.
Oh, no, there's no rush. We just can't start before.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and when it's come to the job classification and the update...
Well, I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I know we've got like thirty seconds here.
Oh, no, there's no rush. We, we just can't start before.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and when, when it's come to the job classification and the updates, and this is good to always make sure that the job that a person is doing matches what they're doing so that it, there's a basis for directing that individual's work on behalf of the county. There's two components to it, and the two components is the, is the job description update and the other is the study that was done relative to pay grade. And that, and the premise upon which value is determined is where I have my, my question on all of these that are coming before the board. And I think if, if we are rightly positioned relative to how we determine value and then couple that with the job description, that that's, that's good and that's responsible in, in the area of how we define the roles and responsibilities and pay for our staff. I'm going, I'm going to support, support this, but when I, when these come before me, at least in my representation, the people and the discussions I have with constituents, it is, it is the premise under which value has been determined that is the hang-up in this for me and for many that have expressed that concern relative to value. So just, that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and support. Any further comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Allison. Have a great day. Thanks for running down. All right, so now it is passed, it's, it's nine oh two, so that means we can start our scheduled nine AM public hearing. And this hearing is, uh, let's see, I'll just read it off the agenda. To provide an opportunity for the public to express their views on the issuance of general obligation solid waste revenue bonds, Series two oh two five B, the process of which will be used to finance the construction of a solid waste facility located, solid waste facilities located at seventy-five Eliasen Mill Road in Grand Ray, Minnesota, one nine eight Saddle Trail Tofti, Minnesota, and six oh two three North Road Holdland, Minnesota. And I guess I'd like to introduce Mr. Bruce Kimmel here from Ellers, our financial consultants, and really appreciate you being here and, and in person, no less. It's great to see you. And I can, I can hand, hand it over to you for any further introduction of the information and then we can have public comment if there's any.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. It's good to be back up. Thanks for melting the snow before I came. Basically, there's not a whole lot more to say about this public hearing. Your bond attorneys at Freiburger Buchanan took a look specifically at this proposed project, the transfer station, as well as the other improvements to solid waste facilities. They took a look at the nature of the lease agreement that you're entering into with North Shore and also the solid waste fees and assessments that will be collected as part of your new system and determined that this is all a bona fide, very legitimate use of bonding, tax-exempt bonding. But that in their reading of the federal tax law, just the nature of that lease arrangement with North Shore, again, nothing wrong with it or untoward, but they felt more comfortable putting the tax exemption on these bonds if you went through the process of having this public hearing to declare the improvements, the projects as exempt facilities. So it's just due to a quirk in the federal tax law. Again, there's nothing wrong or of concern. But, you know, their job is to declare two things to the bondholders. One, that the bonds are valid obligations of Cook County. And the second is that the interest that they earn, that investors earn on these bonds is going to be exempt from federal and state taxation, at least until the, the federal government changes that, which hopefully they will not. And so they take that responsibility very seriously and, you know, they're great at what they do. So we certainly saw no, no reason to object to taking this additional step just to make sure that you're in the clear as it relates to tax exemption.
And we appreciate that. We wanna be super duper careful and, and also provide the public for another opportunity to, to speak to this issue. And we've, we've put a lot of work into this and a lot of discussion, so it's, it's been lo- long in the coming, but always open to, to more feedback. So is there anyone from the public who, who would like to give some comment on, on this issue? Is there, and I'm gonna call it three times 'cause that's what we do. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this issue? Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on this issue? Hearing or seeing no, and I would close the public hearing and open it up for a Commissioner's discussion. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the background on that. Is it a fair question to ask when it comes to attractiveness of bonds and investments, how the tax exemption tends to influence the benefit back to us, given the fact that the earnings on the interest is exempt from federal and state tax? How that compares with an investment that doesn't provide that benefit?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, great question. Tax exemption is really an underpinning for municipal finance and it has been for many years. There's, you know, several different flavors of tax exemption and taxes and bonds. One are the bonds that counties, cities, school districts, townships sell for capital facilities, vehicles, computers, things of that nature. And that's certainly what Cook County has bonded for in the past and is looking to bond for here. There's also taxes and bonding to benefit hospitals, universities, other nonprofit organizations, and even some for-profit activity. Those are called private activity bonds under a large umbrella. And all of this is meant to stimulate investment in core infrastructure and institutions that we find value here in, in America. Right now, if you had to sell these bonds on a taxable basis, either the solid waste bonds or the, the jail and law enforcement center bonds, your interest rates would probably be about one and a half percent higher than they are what we're projecting here for tax-exempt bonds. So it really makes a material difference and that spread can increase as interest rates go up because there's more relative value of having that tax exemption with, with higher rates than with lower rates where that spread decreases somewhat. So fortunately, in the months since Congress announced that it's looking seriously at repealing tax exemption, organizations like NACO and the National League of Cities and the Government Finance Officers Association and other public groups have been very effective in explaining to Congress why tax exemption makes such a difference. And really, if they got rid of it, you would be paying higher interest costs and then the taxpayers would be paying higher interest costs, right? So it's, it's really not saving any money, any money, it's just transferring the burden. And so what we're hearing now is that the risk to municipalities has largely, well, not largely, it looks like it is easing. Although I will not be surprised if Congress, as part of this budget and tax bill, does ding the ability of universities and hospitals and other institutions to issue tax exemption. I, I could see that being kind of a, a middle ground there while still protecting municipalities.
As a follow-up, thank you for that explanation. The, um, in, in the experience of looking at entities that do invest in these types of bonds and how much of that is a motivation based upon more of a support for the, the nature of what the bond monies are gonna be used for. So in other words, a person says, well, I really support this. So it's not just a financial return, but it's also my contribution to something that I, I wanna get behind. So that's the one question. And the other question in the present market, whether you, whether you feel that, that it's attractive or not where we are, whether we find this point in time in, in supporting this measure, whether we will see, it's, if you say, for instance, it's not the best of times to be having to do it, but you have to do it, or this is pretty favorable, that would be the second part of that question.
Yeah, great, great question. So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the attractiveness of bonds really has three components. One is the tax exemption and so your ability to earn at a higher effective yield as, as compared to taxable investments. A second is the, really, the safety and security of municipal bonds. You know, the default rate on bonds, much less Geo bonds, which are the highest creditworthiness, is next to nil. And really, any defaults that we see in Minnesota, much less the country, are on more speculative muni bonds for things like sports domes and golf courses and things of that nature, not, you know, for jails and law enforcement centers and transfer stations. And then the third component is what you alluded to. There are investors that really feel an affinity for investing in infrastructure and the core business of government. And so those are all, I think, factors for both institutional investors like banks, insurance companies, other companies that buy muni bonds, but also for retail investors or individuals, as we, you know, we call individual investors retail investors. So I think, I think you're right that there are, that's a piece of things. As to the current market conditions, even with the run, well, there's two parts to that story. You know, for many, many years, we were in an extremely low interest rate environment and the county has certainly benefited from that with past issuances, borrowing at one and two percent interest rates. Just, you know, I think Brady still probably marvels at seeing those, those bond schedules and the, the low interest rates and coupons on, on your existing debt. In the last several years, rates have gone up and that's no surprise to anyone. You know, we've seen rates go up for individuals and businesses as well. But muni bond rates have not gone up as much as, as commercial rates have. And part of the reason for that is still that safety and security of muni bonds. People want to buy those investments. Another part is there's just not enough supply out there, new issues being brought to market to meet the demand. Because muni bonds are always maturing, right? They're always, always getting paid off. And people that want and basically need to buy muni bonds for their portfolios are left with inadequate supply to refill the bucket. So that helps to keep interest rates lower than they otherwise would be because they're willing to take lower interest rates than they might otherwise if there were lots and lots of bonds being sold in the market. So up to a month or two ago, that was kind of the state of the world. Rates had gone up, but were pretty stable and were less than they otherwise would be. And I think a lot of issuers have been pleasantly surprised by the rates they were getting in that environment. More recently, we've had a lot of turmoil and volatility about tariffs and other world and national events and inflation, what's happening with that. And so investors have been kind of all over the place with the, what kind of interest rates they're, they're looking for on all sorts of investments, including municipal bonds. And we've seen those rates be volatile, especially last week. Yes, was last week? Yes, last week. Things have changed so much, I'm having a hard time keeping track of, of when, when this was. Maybe it was two weeks ago, but in any case, rates have calmed down again in the relative absence of chaos. Once the administration pulled back on, on some of those tariffs, people took a breath and said, okay, we can start investing in muni bonds again and we know what kind of interest rates we're looking for. One thing I'm very happy about with these bond issues for Cook County is that we're actually not selling, or if you approve going forward, we're not looking to sell these bonds until the beginning of, of June, not around the corner. So this gives us more time to see what happens in the market and to assess if, in our opinion, as your fiduciary, if it makes sense to go forward. If we see more volatility throughout May and into June, I'll be the first one to call Rena and, and Brady and say, we need to take a pause here. Can we find some way to cash flow these projects with county resources until we get to a more stable bond environment? Because I don't want the county selling into a really chaotic market. But so far, in the week or so since the upheaval in the markets, the signs are pretty positive and, you know, we'll, we'll hope for continued kind of normalization. So we, we keep a really close eye on it. We do have clients that are in the market, many clients in the market every week. And we can look at those sale results and compare them to our estimates for you and say, okay, are these basically tracking with what we expect? Do we need to change course or make any modifications?
I appreciate the explanations, very clear and thorough, and I appreciate the oversight relative to monitoring, you know, where the market is relative to our best interest. So thank you. Would we expect, I mean, from what you've seen so far, that the municipal bonds are a little less volatile than, than other issues?
Yes. Yeah. They, well, a week or two ago, they, they were very volatile and we had a lot of heartburn. Because investors and underwriters and all those folks just hate uncertainty, right? That's like kryptonite for them, is uncertainty. So we're not out of the woods with that, but hopefully if we have some calming, continued calming, that will continue to have benefits for muni bonds.
Any other questions for Bruce?
So, Mr. Chair, have, have you closed the public hearing?
I have closed the public hearing. Yep, we're on Commissioner comments and questions and discussion, but please.
I do have a couple of pre-sale reports. I can go through some of the high-level details on both bond issues if you'd like. And then you could take up the resolutions on those bond issues, but I'm happy to answer more questions before we get into that as well.
Yeah, and do we wanna, I mean, separate them out and maybe just do that for, first, the solid waste and?
Sure.
Yeah. That'd be great.
That'd be great. Okay, so the solid waste bonds, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, are actually the, the proposed twenty-five B bonds in an estimated principal amount of six point two million dollars. And, and I believe you have the pre-sale report in your packets. Is that right? Okay. And so many of you have seen this form of report before. The purpose of this is really just to lay out the plan of finance for each bond issue and give you the key details and give you an opportunity to raise any questions, concerns, suggestions for changes before we get too far down the road in preparing the official statement, going through the credit rating process and then soliciting the bids on the bonds. Because once we solicit those bids, you know, we can tweak some things on the date of sale. But basically, we're looking for the board at that point to award the bonds to the winning bidder. It would cause a lot of heartache if you decided at the sale date to say, no, we're, we're actually gonna take a pass. So it, it's much better to have this kind of pre-sale discussion, make sure that you're comfortable with the plan of finance ahead of time so that we can go forward and know that you're, you're comfortable and confident with the, with the plan for each of these projects. And by projects, I mean, I know that solid waste is actually multiple projects, but I'm sort of referring to the, the mains transfer facility as the project. So we're looking here with the solid waste bonds to sell the bonds over a term of twenty-seven years in total. That's really gonna be a twenty-five-year repayment term with a little bit of ramping up in interest only on the front end due to the, the plan of construction and the fact that you'll start collecting these solid waste assessments in the next fiscal year. So with the way, you know, bond payments work, we kind of needed a little bit of lead time there. But the bonds will be repaid in February of twenty-eight through fifty-two. You will have interest payments starting next February one of twenty-six. And the bonds will be subject to prepayment or refinancing if interest rates are better at that point and on February first of twenty thirty-five or any date thereafter. And some of these terms and conditions will be similar with the jail and law enforcement bonds as well. These bonds will be non-ta, will be non-BQ, taxes and obligations. What that means is because you're issuing more than ten million dollars in this calendar year, there's one little, little spiff in terms of the federal tax law that we're not able to take, and that's called bank qualification. Please know that that's kind of a misnomer. Banks can buy, banks do buy, non-BQ bonds all the time. This doesn't really reduce the market for your bonds in any way, shape or form. It's just one provision in the tax code that we're not able to... It's just one provision in the tax code that we're not able to use. And in today's market, actually, for probably the better part of the last seven or eight years, the benefit of BQ has diminished because for a variety of reasons, banks don't have to pay as many, as much tax as they used to. One key thing I wanted to raise for both bond issues is state credit enhancement. You already have an excellent, excellent credit rating, but because the state law allows you to apply the state's credit rating of AAA on top of your own for these specific types of projects, we definitely think you should do that. It costs a whopping $500 to apply for state credit enhancement. And given the size and duration of these bond issues, both would certainly benefit from having the state's AAA on top of your AA rating. So that's really great, and it just helps to broaden the marketplace for these bonds a little bit. And again, it's a really nominal cost to the county to access that.
I'll just make a comment. The pre-sale report is not on the board pack, but look at your email. It's attached there. Right now, if you look, you'll see it.
Yeah. I don't have my computer here.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
We will be doing a competitive bond sale, as you have in many times in the past. This is really the best way to get as many competitive bids as possible, and given your very strong credit rating and the fact that that rating will be wrapped with the state's AAA, we know that you'll get multiple really strong bids for both of these bond issues here.
And you can see also that they've, they've put off the, the principal payment for a short while, and you can see that on that report. And that's so that we, we did not put the rates and charges as a special assessment on for this year. It goes on until next year, so we'll be collecting that all during next year. So this allows us to make those payments with what we received and then have it build up for the full payments later on.
That's right. And I would note also then, just scrolling ahead, that just to reiterate the timeline, we're here today for the pre-sale discussion. We will work with county staff on preparing the official statement, having the credit rating call sometime the week of May 19th, distributing the official statement to the market right after Memorial Day, and then taking bids on your behalf on Monday, June 9th, and coming back to you on June 10th for the award. And you'd be receiving the bond proceeds on this issue as well as the jail bonds, jail and law enforcement bonds, right around July 2nd. Do you have any questions about the solid waste financing, how it relates to the fees and charges, et cetera?
Mr. Chair, relative to the state's credit rating?
Yeah.
And the benefit of that for the small cost, $500 bucks. If the cost is as small as it is, you would think that everybody would just do that as, as an assurance or value added, so to speak. So when investors look at it, they're looking at it from the standpoint, they check the boxes, and they look at our credit rating and they say, okay, this is. So whenever you're analyzing your investment, you're going through and checking the box and measuring benefit versus risk. And so when you, when you apply for the state credit rating and they look at that box, given the fact that it's so accessible because of its low price point, you would think that that would be a, sort of a tongue-in-cheek thing.
Yeah, good question, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gamble. It's actually, I should have been more clear on this. Not all county financings can access this, and not, and very few city financings can access this state credit enhancement. I believe most school district financings can. I don't really do school finance, it's its own animal. But, so like, for instance, if you were making improvements to this building, that would not qualify for state credit enhancement. It's really limited to things like jails, law enforcement centers, solid waste facilities, and a small handful of other purposes. And on the city side, it can actually only be used for utility-related financing, not for general purposes whatsoever. So it's, it's my understanding that investors really look both at that state credit enhancement and the underlying county rating. So we would want to still get that county rating so they really know, gee, Cook County has its act together, it's AA, which is really excellent, especially for a small county like yours. And then the state credit enhancement is just really seen as an extra set of suspenders, knowing that if for some reason the wheels fell off, the state, the state would, would step in and make those bond payments on time and in full.
Yeah. So there is real value added to that that's substance. Thank you.
Yep.
I don't think we have any other questions.
Okay.
Should we go ahead and talk about the law enforcement, or maybe we should take action on the first one?
If you take action on that, on that resolution for solid waste, I think that would be appropriate.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so any, any Commissioner Sullivan?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve by resolution the issuance and providing for the sale of general obligation solid waste bonds in the maximum principal amount of $6,250,000 to finance the construction of the new solid waste facilities in Grand Marais, Tofti, and Holon.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Sullivan, apart from Commissioner Gamble, and please...
And one slight correction, the spelling of Marais, in Grand Marais, with that correction. It's in paragraph one of the resolution.
Somebody doesn't know their French?
I copied the same mistake into the leading to this, so...
You're consistent.
Yes, it's very consistent, yeah.
Thank you. I'm assuming that amendment is support, okay. Any, any discussion on this? Any, rather, any more discussion on this? Hearing or saying none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Great.
So moving on to the jail bonds here.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So I imagine there may be a few more questions about the jail bonds than there were for solid waste, because solid waste is really designed, as Brady just alluded to, to be sort of a self-contained, self-supporting organism. You know, we've looked at those rates and charges, what's likely to be generated. You have some time to, to build that, that system up and those revenues up before you start making payments. And we really wanted to right-size the debt service on those bonds to the revenues that will be generated through the solid waste system. The jail bonds, and by jail bonds, I really mean jail and law enforcement center, are of course going to be repaid with general county funds, general property taxes, and have to be part of, you know, your larger budget discussions, right? And your financial management planning that we've done with you for a number of years, and will continue to do, and so on. So that's just one key distinction. That said, these are both general obligation bonds, right? So no matter what the source of repayment, you're pledging your full faith and credit to repaying the bonds. And this bond issue is estimated to have a principal amount of $6.4 million, and it's designed to fund approximately $6.25 million of costs towards the new portion of the jail and law enforcement center. I have to give credit again to our friends at Freiberger. They really look very carefully at state law and determined that these bonds are best suited to the, the expansion of the jail and law enforcement center, based on their very clear or specific reading of state law as it relates to these bonds. And you'll be using some previous bond proceeds from, it was last year, right?
Yeah, the 2024 CAP bonds.
Okay, thank you. To do some of the renovation work in the existing jail and law enforcement center. So it's a great plan of finance to use some revenues that are already on hand and then to really target the new bonds to the new portion of the jail and law enforcement center.
And it really fit, we wanted to try to do all of the jail LEC work at the same time as, as the new was going on, and we have the CAP bonds that we issued last year. We just have to adjust some of the use of that. We weren't, we didn't anticipate that we would use that much on the law enforcement center. We'd be doing more on this building, but this is where we want to put our efforts anyway. So it just, it fits.
Yep, it really did. And so that was great clarification. We feel very confident in, in going forward on, on this, on this bonding authority. There are a couple statutory tests that are relative to, or related to selling bonds that will be paid back with property taxes. You clear both of those hurdles with flying colors. I would note that sometimes we get questions about, well, how much debt can you issue, right? That is subject to the debt limit. And right now, your debt limit in total, based on current property values, is about $87 million. And you have about $9 million of debt that's subject to the limit. Your sales tax debt, for instance, is not subject to the limit because it's being paid with sales tax dollars. Same with your transportation sales tax-related debt. So if you take 87 million minus 9 million, you have 72, or 78 million of capacity. So you're, you have a long way to go before you start bumping up against the statutory capacity. In addition, there is another test related to jail bonds in particular, and you're also very far underneath that debt limit. This bond issue is being proposed for a total term of 21 years with a 20-year repayment term within that 21 years. And we're also suggesting that these bonds be prepayable in 2035 or any date thereafter. So I know that seems like a long way away, but it comes faster than you think, and, and I'm sure Brady will still be here in 2035, right?
We don't know what condition, but we know he'll be here, yeah. Is my turn tied to all the bond debt issue? If you co-sign it, don't you?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I would just note again, a lot of this material is similar to the other pre-sale report about credit enhancement, the county's rating, competitive bond sale. One thing I would note in advance of the June sale, assuming that that date holds, is that we actually expect to receive something called a premium on both bond issues, which means that investors are paying you more than the face value of the bonds in order to have a higher coupon rate or face interest rate. Long story short, the yield you pay is still going to be based on market conditions and the creditworthiness of these bonds. But, but investors like to have these higher coupons, and as a result of that, you get more money, and we, you decide, we would work with you whether you want to keep any of that premium or downsize the bond issue and still net the same amount. And so that'll be discussions that we'll have with your team, just to confirm and reconfirm the county's wishes as to any premium that we receive. And it's possible, for instance, that you would have a bond issue, let's say you decide you only need and want the 6.25 million for this project. We could very easily have a bond, final bond amount that's less than 6.25 million, but you still net the same amount, you still net the same amount due to that premium that's added, that additional cash that the winning bidder is providing. We calculate all of that, along with interest rates and other things, in determining which, which bidder has the best overall bid. But I just wanted to remind you, you've seen this before, but I wanted to remind you that you might have a kind of goofy-looking bond issue of less than the amount that you're actually generating for the project.
Thank you. Any, any questions on, on this bond for Bruce? Any motions on this bond? Oh, Commissioner Gamble, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to make, make a motion.
Okay.
So, a motion to approve by resolution the issuance of general obligation county jail bonds in the maximum principal amount of $6,400,000 to finance the construction of the county's jail facilities and to pay the costs associated with the issuance of the bonds.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamble. We have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion and support. Any further, further discussion? Hearing or saying none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing I will say again, just to reiterate, is we will be in touch with your team as we monitor market conditions, and if we advise you to postpone the sale, we will let you know that a good week ahead of time. So that will be, I'm sure, brought to your attention in the board packet, and there won't be any surprises, but otherwise, expect to see me or my colleague Dan Tinter here in early June, so.
Sounds great. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your being here personally. Thanks, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
Well, very good. We're, we're on the auditor's item here, section five, down to 5C is now the transfer station construction bids. And...
Yeah, so we've received some of those bids for material, labor, concrete, and pre-cast. By we, I mean our construction manager, Johnson Wilson, and he, as you can see, his not-to-exceed contract pages. And then down below that, you can see the bid, bids that they are proposing that we approve today. Number one, the site work package with KTM paving with the labor for $982,300, and the materials at $409,700. Bid number two, the concrete package with Northern Concrete for $931,000 labor, $796,500 materials. Bid three, the pre-cast package, FabCon pre-cast, labor $641,245, and materials $438,093. Now, on the steel supply and the steel install, they would like to rebid for the labor and both parts of the steel install. But for the bid for steel supply, that bid $487,931. The, as they explained, they're rejecting the steel erection bid because they expect to receive one more competitive bid. So they want to wait for that, and the price should come down. On the steel supply, the bidder JRK is low most of the time on commercial projects around our area. We feel that awarding them the bid is best. That's on that steel supply. It hopefully allows them to stave off any tariff issues and gets the delivery and budget concerns addressed. Asked how many bids were received, the site work, they received C, three bids. For the building concrete, they received three bids. They received two pre-cast concrete bids, and just the one bid on steel supply and one on steel erection that they'd like to rebid, so. And I asked, how did this compare to their expectations and what they budgeted? There were some ups and downs. The bottom line is a $46,210 below what they expected. The site work package was significantly below, $372,000. The concrete was up, $268,000, the pre-cast below by $189,602, and the steel supply below by $41,46.
Mostly.
Yeah, given the, the environment, you would have expected that they'd be generally over, and to come in at, at all under, it probably indicates that the supplies were in the pipeline somewhere, and they'd already, they really... And they'd already, they're really here in the United States. I think we don't, you probably know more about that from talking to them.
Really, just what you said. I mean, I think we, we knew the tariffs are coming and they're gonna start affecting it, but the, the material is probably already here. And so it's to our advantage to have gotten this in when we did.
Yeah, and that's, No Sure Waste has been working with them for quite a while, and that, and as they grew more assurance, they probably secured the, found people who had secured that supply, so.
Commissioner White?
How do we go forward without having any actual numbers for labor on installation? I mean, you said they're waiting for another...
So, so that's only for the steel?
Yes.
That they're waiting on that? So the groundwork, you know, can go ahead and begin, that has, that's probably a month from now.
Okay.
This is, this constitutes what? About sixty percent of the total cost of the project? So there will be some other bids as well, like electrical and some plumbing?
So, so maybe this is jumping ahead, but when we're going to the contract, and this is going to be a guaranteed bid, how can they offer a guaranteed bid with missing numbers? That's, that's legal. I mean, without full, full information, we should not be approv, we should not be agreeing to, I, I understand change orders, that's, but we can't start with a zero in place.
Well, I don't, I, my understanding, which is weak, I'll say at best, is that this is only tying us to these numbers, and because the other one was rejected, I mean, that's what's, that's what's out there, right? We're not tying us to zero. We're tying us to, we don't know yet.
Yes, it's, it's not the whole project. This is, this is just to secure the bids that we're aware of now. There's more to come, so.
And so when the contract has a final, has that number, they will do their adjustments to make certain they fall in under that number. I understand, totally understand the volatility of materials, but labor should be, should be a, a number that can be identified.
It will be, yeah.
Yeah, it's just that they wanted a second bid on that.
Yeah, and the, and the, and the materials don't necessarily come with the labor from, you know, they're different companies. So one can give us a, a material price because they're not installing it, for example.
So then at another point, we'll, this'll be coming back to us and we will approve the price.
Sure, it will. Oh, yeah. All of that will come back.
Every single.
This is just what they know today, and they think we should go ahead and approve it. They, they feel good about it because they're guaranteeing these prices.
I understand. The reason you would want to approve these now is because proving them later might make them go up because of the tariffs, so.
Got that part.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gamble, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the question, Commissioner White. It's a concern that I have. I mean, if you're following best practices relative to approving something that you want to know in entirety, given the, the firm that we're working with, they're going to advise us as to what's normal and customary and recommend it based upon our best interests, which means that we lock in these, these bids now if we find them acceptable. But as stated, when you look at the broader picture, there's multiple things that we'll be looking at. Still, in that context, to answer your question, I would say it is the, seeing the bigger picture, the umbrella. What are we looking at? And as these pieces come in, do they fall underneath that umbrella? And are we comfortable with that? If, if we are only looking at, in a measured context, not including all of the elements, we could end up with something we had no idea because we didn't see the bigger picture and put these incremental decisions in context. So I, I would agree, if, if I were asking the question of, of, you know, the firm we're working with and Brady and his experience, it was, is this from a best practices? Are we being good stewards of this as we go along? And, and if it's something that is speaking to where we need to see response on the part of decision makers in moving forward, so from a timeline standpoint, we aren't holding anything up. We weigh that, we weigh, you know, what's normal and customary when it comes to incremental approving an overall bid. And I would just say that, you know, if Brady is, is comfortable, given this is something that we've done in the past, and if the firm that we're dealing with is saying, this is normal and customary, and it's to your best advantage to approve this so we can lock these in. And they, to their credit, when they looked at the labor on the steel, said, we think this is high, and it's always better to have competitive bids comparable so that you have something to make a decision on as opposed to just having to accept the one. So I, I think those things, you know, are, are good to recognize.
So it still begs the question, for me, curiosity, how they came up with a guaranteed final price without all the numbers at their disposal? And I do thank them for being good stewards of our money for, on that.
I think that's why we hire them, is based upon their experience, they're able to project some things. And as we just heard in the discussions on the bonding, that whoever we're trusting for their counsel, it is their experience that helps inform us in making those decisions. So that's the benefit, I would say, there. But I would agree in principle, it just seems like if we don't have all the numbers, how can we approve it? But we're going to get numbers, and we're trusting the counsel that comes from the organization, the firms we work with, to advise us accordingly.
And so coming back here, we are approving no amounts for the labor for this pre-cast deal, and that will have to come back to us at another time.
Because they're recommending, they believe we can do better. Yeah.
Understood.
And I would say that the estimates that they initially came up with were based on extremely detailed plans and already conversations with vendors, you know, on, on current market prices and, you know, they're just their experience on building things like this. So I feel like they built in some buffers in those things and that, and as well as contingency. So, you know, as we move ahead, these were the, these were the scariest pieces, steel and the pre-cast.
Sure.
So the other things, I think, you know, are gonna be okay. I mean, I feel, these were, these were the highest-risk pieces.
Yes.
The labor, less so, but still there. Dustin, was there something you wanted to add?
No, I was just gonna answer some questions. So as Rena had alluded to, a couple of months ago, when we were working our way through the planning process, they had suggested that we really take a look at these big pieces, the things that could be affected by tariffs or anything that's going on like that. So this was called the early bid package. They were all the high-dollar items as well, but we sent this early bid package out to make sure we were going to be able to hit that budget number that we had been talking about. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I think Brady can probably answer this. I think this was about five million or between five and six million of the total cost of the project. And there's gonna be, I think, about thirteen or fourteen more packages that will be looking to get approved. Some of them are very small, you know, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. The only two big parts of the project left are mechanical and electrical, and they feel pretty confident about the numbers that they've budgeted for, for that. In regards to the steel erection or the labor for that, the bid that they got, they were not happy with. I think they had budgeted somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars for that, that package, and it came back at just under a half a million dollars. And they thought that by putting the package back out and getting some interest from other vendors with that part of the package, that they could dramatically bring that number down. So they elected to reject the labor and, and rebid that. And, you know, just one more thing for context, because this is a county project, the materials are tax exempt and labor isn't, that's why you're getting two, two packages for everything, material being tax exempt, labor not being tax exempt. So of those fourteen packages that we have, I don't know how much of it's going to be labor, but there could be twenty or twenty-four more packages, labor and material.
So what you putting on, saying that, that they had anticipated a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, so that was their estimate, viable estimate, but their, what came in was significantly more than, I, I understand that. By giving me that number, I understand what number they were using, so I just...
Yeah, yeah, and, and when we did go through the budgeting process over the winter, all of these things have, I don't want to say necessarily gone out for bid, but they've, we've gone to companies and said, hey, we got this project, can you throw some numbers at it? So the difference that we're seeing in that labor package doesn't align with our expectations from what we received before. And that's why Johnson Wilson elected to, to turn down, down that bid and rebid. So I think they're doing, they're due diligence on behalf of the county in this project by rejecting that bid. So does that answer the questions?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sounds like Commissioners are gonna have to take a workshop on how to wreck steel structures.
Right, right. You're all welcome to come out with your welders and your hammers.
Save a little money. So I guess a, a good comparison would be when we do our annual budget, we have multiple components of that annual budget, but we still have an umbrella that says, this is what we're shooting for. Now we look at it and we approve them incrementally, so. But without knowing the big picture, it's very hard to see how the pieces fit, so.
I, I think we saw that just in the other numbers that we received. You know, there were some people that were very high. I think the, the concrete bid maybe ranged as much as a million dollars, between the low bid and the high bid. And the same thing with the, the ground package as well. So we don't know that the one bid that we got was just, hey, it's a high bid, if we get it, we get it, kind of the thing. And that's why we elected to, to put that bid back out.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion here?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the material and labor maximum price bids for the site work, concrete package, and the pre-cast package and steel supply, with the exception of the labor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion as their support. We have a motion as their support.
Yeah, I support.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamble. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion here?
Can we just identify, just say out loud what the price is?
We have all of them or the total?
Just the total.
Okay, the total for labor at this point is two million seven hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. The materials, which is tax exempt, right now is two million one hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Thanks.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, and I think it'd be good to clarify for the public as well that these bids coming in are under what we were anticipating, which is a good thing. And the other thing is that the motions that, and the, the things that we have done as a board previous to finance this have been approved as we're moving forward. So we've approved the method of financing, we've got the bids, and they came in under expectation except for the labor. And so now we're moving forward with accepting those bids, understanding that the financing has been approved through previous action by this board.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, hearing, there's saying none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
All right, and now for our supposed long conversation here. Brady, we've got a budget calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
What you see in the packet is, is our budget calendar similar to what you've seen year after year. We did change this a few years ago to start earlier, about two months earlier. So again, we'll start at April to get a, some departments a head start, see what they bring in, and then have a final submission by June twenty-eighth, and then start with public hearings or public meetings with the large departments, Public Health, Human Services, the Highway Department, the overall general fund, the approval of a preliminary budget in September, September tenth, it'd be our goal, has to be done by the thirtieth. And then truth and taxation with the notices going out, and then truth and taxation meetings somewhere between November twenty-fifth and December twenty-seventh, has to happen before the final budget. And then we expect, or our goal would be to have that approval of the final levy on December tenth, giving ourselves the rest of the month if we can't complete that at that time. So this is just our standard budget calendar, but I expect with the volatility in the markets, with our bondings, with other potential large changes, that this could be a larger discussion before the board. It won't all happen today, but we'll be having a meeting of the Budget Facilities Advisory Committee later this afternoon, and that will probably be the largest part of that meeting, I expect, today. And so forth. So I'm expecting the, you know, board may have some questions now on, on, you know, how would, how would you like to move forward from this standard model?
Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Brady. Yeah, I appreciate bringing the, the outline and for the, the board to consider. My recommendation would be that, given things that you've talked about, volatility, when everything, something changes in the marketplace, we're dealing with PIL, we're looking at our revenue resources, I think the board going in as a projection should have a general idea coming from you as to what you see, the effects of change on, and what, you know, we've been experiencing relative to our revenue sources, what we might be looking at. And so I, I think, to any extent that a department can inform us on some things that they see as to how change has impacted things, I think we should know that prior to setting out and asking departments to work on the budget. And what I mean by that is that if you look at the schedule that's proposed, we're basically putting that out right now and say, work on your budget. I think that this, as a decision board, given responsibility of representation on behalf of the community, we should give a directive. And the directive should be informed based upon revenues projected, best estimate, and anything else that we might experience departmentally that could inform the board to shape that direction. So we would give a direction, and then that direction would be included in what goes out to department heads, if that makes sense. I think that, I think that we should inform that as opposed to just saying, it's time to do your budget, do your budget. What we have learned and what we know about things that we're experiencing, both on the state and the federal level, and changes, and our, when we looked and said, how come we've got this money here? It's because we got a greater return on our investments that we had before. We should know what those projections look like, which might be very difficult, but at least we've asked the question. So my request would be that we, as a board, would get some information and set direction before that goes out and say, do your budget. Do it with this understanding.
The understanding that they have that they're gonna tell us?
No, because the collective understanding that comes from being informed on... No, because the collective understanding that comes from being informed on the revenue side and the expense side informs us to give a direction.
But we get that information from the departments.
No, it's still, you, you need to set a direction. We might want to go in and saying, given what we know, this is, this is our recommendation. Look at your budget through this lens. And we've done, we've done this before, at least in my first term we did, we went in and said, this is, this is the task before you. As opposed to just open-ended, do your budget.
I'm not really clear. I think what you're saying is we want, you're expecting us to want to cut the budget based on potential revenue shortfalls, but it's all potential. There are some that we know, but the departments will incorporate that into their budgeting process.
Not unless it's a directive.
They have to. If they are, if they are receiving less revenue, that has to be incorporated in their budget.
Well, it, it would be, but it's underscored by the people that are going to approve the budget that you're saying that, that that direction comes in. And often you'll, you'll have management that says, looking at things, and this is where we're saying, give us the information so that we can make an informed decision based upon what you perceive. But then that comes as a direction from the board to the departments with that collective overview that you're looking at, not departmentally independently what they do, but what we do with all of that information collectively and sending a directive to everybody.
Yeah, I, and so how would that affect the calendar?
Well, it just means that we would, we would have to have, we would have to have that directive based upon the information that we review. And it would affect it, meaning that it doesn't, the calendar says that it, I think it goes out tomorrow, doesn't it? Something like that?
That would be the plan, but I think this is going to happen probably in stages of knowledge. One of them would be the, the state cuts, for example, and some of them are direct. Some departments will know, Human Services will know, have some knowledge, they already have some knowledge. A few of the other departments that have some knowledge of what's to be cut, but those were in the governor's proposal. We don't know what the legislature is going to end up with. So I see this as, this is what we know and don't know, and we'll have stages of this. We don't know everything about the federal cuts for sure. That, that could be all year. We haven't even received our, our large BWCA PILT payment, and I've, I've seen an email that leads me to think it might not be what was approved on the reappraisal last year, but I don't know, I have no information on that. I've sent out multiple emails and have not received anything back on that, for example. So I'm just saying, there's going to be a lot of not knowing. It seems to me the directive is given what we don't know primarily, cautious, you know, but how you want to tackle this, I guess is the, do you want to delay the first letter? I'm not sure that that will, for most departments, my department, Recorder, some of them, those big issues in individual departments aren't necessarily, they're going to be affected by the larger issue. If the county doesn't have as much PILT, you know, we're not going to be able to have a larger level or levy, for example. So I'm, I'm not sure if delay of that step, because nothing that they put out to us is set in stone, they're just giving us a.
Right, that's just their request, and then we, that's when we give the directive as kind of.
Right, and the larger directives may, and maybe that's the, the letter that goes out that says there may be limits put on, on hiring next year. There may be, we, we do have some base within our budget. For example, we've already negotiated the cost of living for 2026 is 2.75 for all of the unions. So unless you renegotiate, that's set. We know our health insurance, we don't know it, but we've used a standard of a 10%. And recently, it was 9.95 and, or 7.6 or, and sometimes it's much larger. So that's a fairly standard, and we've had no reason to change that. But I mean, these are some of the base, and salaries are the biggest part of our, let's say, general levy, other than bonding and highway projects. But other than those, it's by far the largest part of our budget.
Commissioner White, please. So the directive could be a real, a real cautionary direction, directive saying, we, we really would like to have a levy that's at 3% and because of the, but do your best. I mean, 3% is quite low, but I still haven't figured out this evaluation. I've been, the, if my property has increased in price and the levy is still the same, then why would I not be paying more in property taxes? So anyway, I've been through this a few times and I still don't get it. And so interim Rena has tried, and Bob has tried, and I just need to have it more times. I just don't understand the math. So, so if our prop, which indeed our property values are all increasing significantly because of market value, that's how our property taxes, our property values go up, then if last year we did 4% of, say, very elemental, if my property was $100,000 last year and I pay 4% on that, but this year my property is 200,000 and I pay 4%, that would be, I'd be paying double the amount, so it should be, I'm really confused about this whole thing, so I just think that we should caution departments to try, to be aware that our, some of our funding sources that we have been able to kind of count on in the past might really be not there this time around. So otherwise, that, that's what I'm just thinking.
Yeah, and I think department heads are very aware of, of the hurdles that we'll be facing and the state and the country are facing, and, but I think it is wise to ask for a very conservative and cautious budget.
And we have a, excuse me, but we have a responsibility to, I mean, we can assume they will be wanting to do that, but they have a passion for their services they provide, and we just need to give that reminder that.
Sure.
Think about what we might have to do.
Yep.
You might have to do.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Rena, you had something?
I'm just wondering if perhaps this is a good topic for the budget advisory group to maybe have it, have a, a good discussion about, you know, basic assumptions that would be, you know, useful for department heads when they're thinking about their budget. Like, for instance, an assumption might be, you know, what, what are your key services? What are, you know, how are, how, if you, I'm trying to think of a good assumption, I'm sorry, but some, something that, that helps inform or guidelines really for them to think about when they're doing this. I mean, to me, the budget should be looked at through a lens of service, services, and, you know, there are mandatory services, and there are nice-to-have services, and there's level of services. And those are the, those are the places that we can adjust. Some of those services are tied to grants, some of them are county-funded, some of them are, you know, combinations of funding, and so understanding how, how something is funded, understanding what's mandatory, understanding how that's delivered, you know, where can you make adjustments? So it's a, it's a, it's a deeper dive, I think, to, to really understand all those components and not just say, well, 5% off the top or whatever, but to understand where you can make those adjustments and, and do that. And I wonder if that's the kind of discussion, to get some kind of high-level assumptions or guidelines from that community group that has commissioners on it as well, and Brady sits on that. Might be a starting place to come back and make recommendations to the board that could then be communicated to.
Yeah, so we could.
I'd respond, but.
One moment, please. My, my biggest concern is that I don't see how this fits into the budget calendar. I think the sooner we get requests in and out, the more we can have these conversations. But to say that we shouldn't have department heads begin to look at their budgets and budget goals, that's kind of what we need. We need that to happen so we can be better informed to, to, to see where, just those things that you identified as the mandated services versus the non-mandated services are. And I, I think it's spot on to have that cautious directive, but I don't know that we need to change the calendar, that's where I'm confused, and if that can be cleared up for me, I'm sorry. Commissioner Campbell wanted to speak, and I cut him off, so if.
No, no. She's been waiting, so I've been deferring because I wanted to respond, but she's been waiting.
I just agree with you. I think the calendar is a separate issue. I think we worked on moving this calendar earlier, and I think of all things, we need this earlier calendar this year because we have a lot on our plate. The department heads are very aware of the state budget and what's been proposed, and we won't know till later in May and maybe even after that. We also know we have a lot of federal issues. Our department heads are aware of that. I think we need to move forward and approve this calendar now.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, to Rena's comments, I, I, I agree, and that's basically what I'm, what I'm asking. And, and it would be like if we say we're going to set off on a journey, and if we don't determine which road we're going to take to get there, it might take a lot longer. And so the balance for me, I'm aware, Brady's opening comment was, we've moved this up in the process, which is a good thing, because we need more time devoted, and sometimes we see we're dealing with less minute. You don't want urgency to be making your decisions. And so I, I think we need to be more informed, is my point, and I would say if I were a department head, I would, it's, it's like, give me a job description. If I get hired, let me know what I'm supposed to do. And I, and we aren't excluding them and their experience and their information in informing the process. We're saying, let us know upfront without delaying so that we push you back in a corner and say, now they're asking to do this, and we, it's tough enough as it is. But I do believe that we should give some clear direction based upon what it is, and to just make a generic statement that be cautious, I don't, I don't think that that, that in itself is as clear direction as, like if I get a job description and it says, well, just do stuff that needs to be done in your department. Tell me, tell me what it is.
Well, and it's not us that knows best, it's.
Huh? But that's why I say in the front to the things you're talking of, and I'm saying to defer it to the budget committee, advisory committee, to bring to the board with a recommendation that gets incorporated into the calendar, then there's an awareness, and it's set up with a structure that reinforces direction. That's important. But if it comes to here without compromising, you know, the, the timeline on, on this, but I think if we move forward without a process that is clearly identified and informed, I think we're going to be ruminating, 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 and then department heads, I wish I would have known this on the front end.
Well, I mean, I, I feel like this is a very clearly defined process, and we've gone through it. I mean, this isn't, the only thing that's new here is the uncertainty of federal state funding. And, and we're all aware of that uncertainty. Our department heads are all aware of that uncertainty. You don't think they're aware of this?
No, no, I'm not saying they're not aware. I just say, what business does not give direction? What business does not give direction based upon an analysis of where we are at? And it's our responsibility to give that direction as decision makers, not because we know it all. It's worth saying, give us the components, and if it comes to a, an advisory committee that's tasked with that, with coming a recommendation, there's multiple cases where we have recommendations coming from somebody who's chewed on it so that it's better for us to digest.
Yeah.
But I think we need that integrity.
That's, this isn't anything new, though. This is how it, this is how we do it. Or, I mean.
No.
Like, I don't understand the conflict, is what I'm saying, like, this is.
Well, the conflict is, is that the directive, right now, which is, we approve this budget calendar, it's going out, so start working on your budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gather the information, and then they'll bring it to us, and then we can have those discussions about what.
No, but then they're going to be doing work that, that now we're going to start to, to.
On the front end, identify directives.
Chew on it, as opposed to on the front end, give me some direction. If you hire me in a job and say, this is the job, what do you need? Here's a job description up here, give me the detail. We just ask the question here about what is it that, that the technical and the Highway Department does? That's definition to expectation. And I'm saying, we need, we not just say, do the budget, we want definition, more clarity, just say, be cautious.
I was going to say, kind of two things can be true at once.
Sure.
I think, you know, we are approving a calendar, and a calendar is a process. You know, when a, when a, when an department head starts a budget, they start by populating it with the information probably that they used last year. And then I think, I mean, that's, that's a process. That, that takes a little bit of time. Some of them get started right away, some of them will wait till the deadline. But I think then, you know, we can move ahead, like with the advisory group, and start formulating some assumptions that can be added to this process while they're doing this, because they're going to be looking at that and gathering those numbers and adjusting them before the first time the board sees it anyway. So these two things can, I think, exist in parallel and, and keep the process moving, because it may take a couple of meetings with the advisory group to come to some even understanding. The first time you mention it to them, they're going to look at me like, what are you talking about? So it, there's a process of, of culling that out, and I think you can add this information in layers, and as May proceeds, we're going to have more information as well to add to that process. When I did my budget, you know, there was a starting point, and then, you know, I brought in more current information and kept culling it till I got to my final budget. So there's, I think, I think the point of, we can get started on the calendar, but then we can add this other information as it's getting refined, is, is doable as well. But I think, I think to your point, Commissioner, adding this information, adding some assumptions, adding some ability to, to filter that information, given the current environment, is a helpful directive. But we.
Yes.
It may take us a little bit to get to that information. We don't want to delay the whole process because it'll, it'll cause problems on the other end.
Yeah, and to your point, I mean, and the two things, is trying to achieve what we're hoping to do, and, and the, the push here seems to be, we don't want to delay this process, when the other is we want, we want a clear directive so that department head says, we don't know whether we're coming or going here. I mean, there can be a general consensus, but I think the more clarified, it's why we've invested as much money as we have into job descriptions.
Sure.
Because we want clarity. But when we do that, we don't exclude department heads from informing so that that reflects what they actually do. And I think when it comes to budget, that, that we need to do that. But that directive from decision makers needs to come with recommendations from whomever. So I'm not trying, I'm not trying to use a process that belabors, I'm trying to use a process that builds integrity and clear direction so that we feel we know what we're doing.
Sure, I, and I completely agree with you. But I'm thinking that these things can kind of be layered through the process. But I, I absolutely agree with you that, that there's a different lens that needs to be applied right now because of the uncertainty of, of the environment, the bigger environment.
And I do believe our calendar addresses that. If you look up until May 16th, it says Administrator and Auditor Discuss Budget Goals With Departments. That's precisely the work that you'll be doing, and that May 16th date is on there because of when our legislature ends and makes decisions. And we may have other adjustments, federal in nature, but I, I think it's a great idea to have the Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee come up with, you know, some ideas, some guardrails, if you will, for budgeting. But I think the calendar already addresses that that information will be shared with our department leaders.
Commissioner White?
So in years past, did the facilities, did the budget and facilities, did that group share information or did they discuss? share information, or did they discuss with, and give to the commissioners and/or the department heads their recommendations? I mean, did they do that in the past, or is that the fact that we're trying to do both this year, like this is, I think, what the administrator suggested, has great value, and it should be a way to really assess, that we don't have duplication, that we have efficiency, and where, where do the dollars come from, and on what type of a schedule do the numbers come or not come, as it were. So we're trying to do both in one year. And I believe to give, for commissioners to give a good directive with more, more specific directive, we need to have that committee dig in it to it also. And it does not mean that nobody can, nobody, as in department heads, have to do nothing until, you know, they can, they can, they can do things. And when the time comes and we follow this as closely as possible, we just have to dig in and really do what we need to do. And I just sort of feel like this is like the start of a more streamlined, we're going to get this. Maybe I'm too hopeful. Maybe, maybe I'm blood sugar levels going. But anyway, I agree that the, I feel like as a commissioner, we should give some directive. But I don't feel at this point, right now, that we have enough, except a cautionary tale that, don't assume anything that happened in the past will happen this year. And of course, it's always been, we don't know what the state is going to be able to do because there's chaos everywhere.
Right. So I can, I can't speak to what always happens on the Budget Advisory Committee, but five years ago, you know, I'm on a five-year rotation for this administrative.
[laughing]
But, but when, I did it before.
Ms. Sullivan.
Right. And me and Brady were like on this parallel path together. We actually had the finance advisory, the budget advisory group work on policies. So like, for instance, they worked on a policy about fund balance, and they made recommendations back to the board. So this is a similar kind of idea, you know, to have that advisory group work on, on, you know, really advice. Here's what we see in the community, and here's, here's some assumptions that we're making about this budget process, and make those recommendations back to this body. And to consider how we might want to communicate with.
Yeah, depending.
With Matt.
Depending on what those advice from the Budget Advisory Committee would be, it maybe should come back here before it goes out.
Right.
To department heads.
Definitely.
Yeah. So it wouldn't go from this afternoon out to department heads. But I think the first message, if you go ahead with the calendar as is, the first message is that you're going to be, you're going to be aware of the changing our market, our budget market, and information. And you're going to be, you have to be flexible. You may see directives coming later, and you may have to change what you put in your first budget. Just so that, that's what they'll need to be aware of right now.
Right.
And the change is likely, given what we don't know.
Mr. Sullivan?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2026 budget calendar, outlining the timing and steps leading to an approved budget and levy, and also direct the Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee to make recommendations to this board.
We have a motion. Is there support?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would support the motion if we included in that motion that our Auditor Treasurer would include the language that he just spoke to us in that directive to staff, just generically.
Yes, absolutely.
I'd make an amendment to my motion.
Okay. We have a motion and support. Commissioner Campbell, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing or saying none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for the discussion.
You bet. Thank you. Yes. Well, apologies. We'll take, you know, I say five minutes, but I bet you it'll be 10 minutes. Let's take a break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I said 10 minutes, it's been 14, so that tracks. Welcome back everyone, we're gonna restart our regular meeting and it's Tuesday, April 22nd and now it is 10:38 a.m. So on our agenda, we've kinda bounced around a little bit, but we are through item five, auditor, we are through item six, highway, we are through item seven, MIS, and now we're on to maintenance with fleet vehicles. I betcha, Brooke, you wanna take a front seat here?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and-
You betcha, good morning.
Well, as we discussed in committee of the whole last week, there's a need for vehicles to get the fleet back up to our minimum numbers that we had before. I've discussed some different options that we can go through. The state purchasing site, I went through them, they are not offering much of a discount, we're doing, basically it's a MSRP, so they're asking $31,974. The rental was also an option we could have gone through, and if we rented, the cost on that was eight, $1,850 per month, so we would do a four or five month basis, and again, that, I don't feel that's a viable option as well, because we would have a lot of logistics to deal with, and then also, we wouldn't have any equity at the end and we'd be spending the same amount. So, what I'm asking for today is approval of one of three different lease/finance options, and we have them broken down to a $10,000 down, $5,000 down, or zero down, respectively. And the, the total hit, the current balance in the vehicle fund is, correct me if I'm wrong, Brady, $33,000.
Hundred, hundred thirty.
$33,000. And we have the options that would-
(coughing)
The options that would come down to, if we did a $10,000 down, down payment with taxes, license, seven months of payments, with a per vehicle, per vehicle of $17,000, we're looking at total hit to 2025 of $107,000. And then, in 2026, that figure would drop to $40,716. With a $5,000 per vehicle down payment, that would be a total hit to the, to the vehicle fund of $82,343. And then, the continued for 2026 would be $47,984. And if we do the zero down payment, the total hit this year would be $57,000, and then the 2026 hit would be $55,252. And what we found getting-
Brooke, excuse me, so what you're talking about, when you talk about the price-
Yep.
That's for six vehicles?
That's for six vehicles, we've, I've, I've just dropped it down to what we need for the fleet.
Okay.
We're gonna keep running the van, the 99 van, custodian crew's been running that, and it's, it's currently operating. If that should have a catastrophic failure, I talked to Rena about it, I can get a topper for the back of one of our pickups, and it, and we can, we can make it work for us, the, the van was expensive, and I think our department can make it work with the current van or the current vehicles we have. So I'm just trying to get the ask that we get on a daily basis for vehicles, to get that fleet back up to where it needs to be. So that's why the numbers have dropped slightly, because the van was expensive.
And just, just for those people that were not listening in to our committee of the whole, could you explain which departments on a regular basis use those vehicles and how many, like how many for public health and human services and, and-
Yep.
We don't have an excess of vehicles.
Right, the short-term needs is the assessor uses two generally, land services two, soil and water two, maintenance three, public health and hu- human services has two, radio communications has one, and then it's the fleet where we get the daily ask for.
So how many vehicles do we actually own at, or have under our care, including anything leased, if we have any? And I know some of them are like really old.
Yeah, yeah, currently, I mean historically it was, it was 17, now we're down to 14. One of our, one of our trucks was, had a motor go out on it, and we, we decided not to replace it and get rid of it. One was totaled out, and then we also donated another vehicle to the airport as a courtesy vehicle.
Thanks.
And, so, in the past, let's say 2014, we had revenues in the vehicle fund of $81,000, and that was at a reimbursement rate of .56, which comes out to be, we got reimbursed for 140,000 miles that year, which in today's funds at the .70 would be $98,000. Last year, 2024, 10 years later with the age on our vehicles and people not enjoying driving them much at all, our revenue dropped to 50,000, which at a .68 reimbursement rate is only 75,000 miles. And last year, the personal vehicle reimbursement was $76,695, so people drove 113,000 miles in their personal vehicles last year, because of the aging fleet and the, the loss of vehicles. So, I mean, when it comes down to it, if we can get back to the revenues of 2018, 2015, all the way up to 2019, at the current reimbursement rate of 70 cents a mile, we would have a revenue in the $105,000, I mean, yeah, around 105, $98 to $105,000 into the reimbursement fund. So if we take our 55,000, or 47, I mean, the vehicle fund can handle it without any influx of cash from the levy or anything else, it will sustain itself. Our vehicle cost per year, if we go with 10,000 down, is $6,780 a year, which equals about 13,000 miles to be reimbursed into the, into the vehicle fund, which when I'm speaking with other counties, they always see, you know, anywhere from a 20 to 30% increase in their use of vehicles, when you get a new vehicle, so it is, I'm assuming, you know, with a lot of good information from other maintenance directors and fleet managers, we will be able to sustain this without any, any influx of cash from the levy or anywhere else.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, thank you, Brooke, for the information. I'd like clarification on what you said initially.
Yep.
Talking about six vehicles, and then you said, you referenced seven months, did I mishear that?
Seven remaining months on this budget.
Well, if you-
Oh, you're talking about the seven months remaining on, on-
On this-
On this year?
This year.
Okay, alright.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so your, your projection, what I'm looking at is, the question is, when we look at our total cost for the commitment of, of the new vehicles, which is the request before us today-
Yes.
-coupled with what our annual cost for existing fleet, maintenance, whatever else, now you've got your total cost, and you project that out over the term of the lease, and then you look at the revenues that we're projecting, and we're saying that presently, and you look historically, at what we're generating, based upon we charge out at the going federal rate for mileage each year, and so we take the total number of miles driven using both county vehicles and personal vehicles, and that gives us that final revenue number. So when we look at our expenditures, which include maintenance and cost of vehicles, and then we look at the revenue source to fund that expense, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to say, can we fund that through the mechanism that we've set up that does not impact in any way levy dollars? And we're making some assumption, although we can look at our historical perspective, we're making some assumption that with newer vehicles, we would see more use of county vehicles over personal vehicles, because our reimbursement fund, funded through county vehicles at 70 cents a mile, compared to personal, personal is higher than counties. So if we did a projection that said if we had a 10% increase in county vehicles over personal, we would see this, and if we had a 20%, because we're making the assumption, or we've heard it, that people don't like driving the old vehicles we have, so they drive their vehicles, or because they wanna run an errand when they're gone someplace, and if our policy says within reason, if your errand's in Colorado, we won't allow that, but if it's, you know, somewhere in vicinity, we would allow that. So whatever policy is, will define what expectation is relative to revenue, and I think as, as the board, our intent is, can you show me through the numbers and anticipated revenue generation, that this decision will be funded through the mechanism we've put in place to fund it?
Yes, yes, I believe so, I mean, along with some, with some policy, need to write some policies I discussed with Rena. There's kind of a, it's already a policy that if a fleet vehicle is available, you're supposed to take a fleet vehicle. A lot of people like to take their personal vehicles, because if they're running to Duluth, you know, it's a, it's to run errands as well and take care of other things that yours, we're always running to Duluth for. But a lot of counties I've spoken to are paying a half reimbursement rate on, on use of your personal vehicle, if you'd like to do other things, other than your meeting. And it's, it's on an honor system, but many of the counties I spoke to have good success with that, where they're like, no, I'm gonna take my own, I'll take the, either a one-way trip or a half reimbursement, because it still makes sense for me, because I need to, you know, go to Costco, go to Walmart, go to the places we need to go to where we're, living where we live.
And I guess I would say in my personal experience, if I, if I drive to a meeting that's in Duluth, if I look at my odometer and I see what it is from here to there, and I write that down, then I just simply double that, and anything that I do beyond that isn't calculated in, because I'm getting there to get there, if that's normally what it is, so I just take what it is to get there, and then two times that is the fair, fair rate, anything I do beyond that, it's not-
Yeah, it's just something to encourage people to drive county vehicles, so the, so the, the vehicle fund gets reimbursed, and it doesn't cost, you know, because the 70 cents is, is going to the vehicle fund or it's going to you personally?
Yeah.
And us as fleet managers would prefer us getting that, that 70 cents a mile, so we can maintain our vehicles, buy new vehicles, and everything else that goes along with, with that revenue that we need to manage our fleet.
Yeah. And Mr. Chair, just one final comment here, is that I think good information to inform our decisions is, is important, and in this case, if, if the actuals that we look at, given our experience between county vehicles and the personal use vehicles, and the projections that we're trying to reasonably make based upon consulting other counties in this regard, that we're not coming up with a tongue-in-cheek thing to sell this, we're coming up with solid numbers that in good faith inform this decision, which I appreciate.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at, if we get back to the, to the earlier levels, I mean, we're, we're at 150,000 miles at 70 cents, that would bring $105,000 into the vehicle fund. And my expenses, plus the cost of the lease, would only be, depending on what we do, you know, 85 to 95,000 on, out of that 105, so I, I'm back in gaining $10,000 a year, instead of losing 10 to 15.
Yeah. Pretty good.
So I'm wondering, you, you, you had three numbers there-
Yep.
For 10,000 down, or 5,000 down, or zero down, I'm wondering if there's a recommendation you have there? I, my tendency is to be very risk-adversive, and given the age and the repair rate of those other vehicles, that it would not be 10,000, for sure.
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
But, but I would even say on this first round, even zero, but I, I think that's a matter of discussion, but, but for me, you know, you've, how many, you know, we just watch these repair rates going up and up, and you don't wanna have, not have enough money there-
Right.
-to take care of that existing fleet that's still in, in, in the queue right now.
Yeah, and I would feel comfortable with, even the, even the 5,000 down, that's, it's a hit total this year of, well, 30,000 to the vehicle fund right off the bat, but that still leaves me with $100,000.
Okay.
And then, we could, you know, that's plenty of money to work with, I mean, I've got one vehicle down right now, they're trying to find a gas tank for, I mean, there's, we're, we're hurting, so I need to get this call in soon, they're also anticipating a $6,000 per vehicle increase, that could happen in the next few months, so, kinda time is of the essence with this one, so I'm hoping I've got all the information, so you guys can make a informed decision.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just understanding the numbers you initially gave to us, that if you look at the 10,000 down, and you said that was 107,000 plus in '26, it's 40,000, that's, that's a total of $147,000. If you go to the 5,000, with what you said in '25, '26, that's 130,000, if you go with the zero down, that's 57 and 55, that's 112,000. So the difference between, if I'm just looking at dollars, if the numbers you give us are being interpreted correctly, the zero down is 20,000 less than the 5,000, and 35,000 less than the 10,000. It seems to be opposite of what usually is the case when you're buying a car, if you pay down, you know, you, you can, you have a less, less cost, but in this case, the zero makes most sense financially, if I'm understanding the figures the way you represented them.
Yes, it, yes, I mean, it's not a complete hit to the, to the vehicle fund in that dollar amount, though, because we will be making money off of those vehicles during that time. But yes, that is, that is the actual numbers, it's 107, plus the 40, and 82, plus the 47, and then 57 this year, plus the 55.
And, and I would be willing to make a motion based upon the information that you've provided for us, which I appreciate, that we would go with the, with the zero, because it's the cheapest.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I agree, I would go, that would be my recommendation, as well as to go with a zero.
Yeah, so our, our intention is to provide, provide what we need at the, at the leased cost.
Right.
And the other component for the public is, that with this lease, we, the maintenance is included in the lease-
Correct, correct.
-which is huge when you look at the cost of maintenance that we are trying to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the nice thing with the-
Or have to do.
Yeah, the nice thing with the included maintenance is as well, that since the sheriff's department currently uses Enterprise to lease all of their squad cars, both Steve's and Tyranado Lodge are both signed up already with Enterprise, so we, we can do our maintenance locally.
Right, so Mr. Chair, to, in response to the information that's provided to us that justifies this and does not have an impact on, on the levy, in, in theory, based upon the figures we're looking at, I would recommend the purchase of six new small AWDs, SUVs, and selling the four other vehicles, any idea of what we might anticipate, and how do we sell vehicles, do we use a middleman, or do we do it?
No, I mean, Enterprise would love to sell us for, sell them for us, but then they wanna charge 500 per vehicle, and we've done sealed bids, is my understanding, in the past, or we could use a state auction site.
Alright, thank you.
I know Deb's a big fan of the state auction site.
I refute that. No, state auction site has all sorts of cool stuff.
Yeah.
And people read it.
Yeah.
All sorts of people.
People buy stuff too, don't they?
Yeah, they do.
I concur with your recommendation as well, Commissioner Campbell, is, is there a motion?
You may.
Oh, I only hear recommendation, I'm sorry, is there support?
Support.
Okay, thank, we have a motion and support, any further discussion there? All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye, opposed?
Thanks, Brooke, for the information.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
You can check that off your list after they make that order.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine here, assessor, we have Chief Parcel, Sawtooth Bluff Master Plan, and thank you everybody for, for being here this morning, appreciate it. Bob, do you wanna do an introduction for the item here?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners, so, you know, we're here to continue our discussion on the, the chief parcel that is up adjacent to the Sawtooth Bluffs, we do have Mr. Chief and his attorney present, so that the board can conversate and ask some questions, and, and hopefully we have a better idea where this is gonna go before the end of the meeting. end of the meeting. So since our Committee of the Whole meeting, I did reach out to the Minnesota Land Trust and talk with Pat Collins. They are, are still interested and onboard with, you know, proceeding with that original plan that we had talked about. I think it's listed as option A on the, on the board paperwork. So, you know, really, I think that it's, it's, it would be into the hands of, of Mr. Chief if the board decided that that was the direction that they wanted to go to work it out with the, the folks at the Minnesota Land Trust and, and bring this back at another date to, you know, do all of the, the resolutions and paperwork to get that moving forward.
Well, thank you and thank you both for being here this morning. We've been talking about you but not with you and it's, it's always helpful to have you as part of the conversation. So have a fair amount of background here, but don't know where the board would like to, to take the conversation if there's some immediate questions or if you want to lay things out a little bit for us, that could be helpful too.
Let me lay things out. For the record, anybody listening online, I'm Tyson Smith, I'm John's attorney. I have a package of documents here for you. My view is if you're going to talk about a document, it's easier to have it in front of you. Much of this is already been provided to you in your prior agenda materials, but some of it hasn't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brady, sorry. I think you're gonna get-
Fine.
Yes. Brady, you can have this one.
So two things I want to do today. One is present the county board with an offer from John for how he proposes to proceed. Before I get there, I watched the last two Committee of the Whole meetings in preparation for this. And I have to say, I am concerned that you are being asked to make a decision based on some inaccurate and incomplete information as well as some really terribly flawed legal advice. So I want to start with that. There was a long discussion about the right of John to use the Platted Streets for utilities. And you were told he doesn't have a utility easement. That's not a little bit wrong, that's black and white wrong. I could probably talk for 20 minutes about the history of easement development in Minnesota. I'm not going to do that. I'll give you two simple examples. One is before you, it's that order, page one of that packet. If you go to page 11, I've highlighted the language that's relevant. When we talk about the scope of use of an easement, ultimately what we're concerned about is what does the easement say you have the right to do? This one says three things: free use, ingress and egress. And just so we're all clear, free means without restriction. The only caveat on that is if your use would interfere with someone else's right to ingress or egress, you can't do that, i.e., you can't build a gate. But can you install utilities? Absolutely within the scope of free use, no question about it. The second example I would give you is more pragmatic. Pearson-Munson's is in addition to the city of Grand Marais. These are city streets. If you are bored in your free time tonight and you want to read David Myers's Deputy Examiner Report to the court as to why he believed we had this easement right, you'll see an analysis there briefly about how the language of dedication in this old, you know, early 1900s plat is identical to the village plat dedication. So I, essentially what I'm saying here is I think the PUC down at Grand Marais would be surprised to learn the county doesn't think it has the right to install water, sewer, power, fiber telecommunications lines in the city street easement area because absolutely it does. I, I really urge you not to go down the road of trying to prevent John from installing utilities in that easement corridor if that's where we go. And the reason why I say that, you have eminent domain authority, you have the right to take property rights, but if you do, you have to pay for it. And that's not where this, this case should go. There's two very good-for-the-county outcomes here and we're asking you to pick between them. Second point. I have had some concerns, not just on this file, but on files generally, about the arguments that I make to the county and then the recitation of those arguments for your review. And this email is an example. So if you review it, you might note that I seem a touch frustrated and it is, I am when I'm writing this. It's all about the value that's being presented to us by Mr. Thompson for the potential acquisition of its property by the county. And he presented a comp grid with four comps and this is me telling him the reasons why I, I just don't think these are appropriate. They seem to me to be very adversarial. Frankly, in the private practice, if I see someone, someone comes to me and says, you know, I want to, I want to use 80 acres up at the end of the Caribou Trail, it's truly landlocked, has no lake view as a comparable for something on the Sawtooth Bluff, which is right next to down Grand Marais with a panoramic lake view, that's an indication to me that that person doesn't really want to make a deal. That's okay, it just means we need to go pursue other avenues if we are in such different camps as to valuation. We're talking with Sandy Hoff to get an updated market analysis right now. If you're not aware, we've completed the subdivision. There are now eight 10-acre lots. That's, the last page of this is the current GIS map printed out, see what they look like. They're simple, but simple here, I think, is best. We're being advised that the listing price for those is in the low 200s. And if you look at the sales on Coyote Ridge, County Road 7, on Burst Drive, that's absolutely where the market is right now for lake view property in Cook County. 10 years ago, when I moved back, I would have laughed at you if you said that's what it would sell for. But I'm not laughing now and neither is anybody else in this town, given how much property values have gone up. And the reason, particularly if you land like this, it's not, it's not supernatural. There just isn't any of it left. If you look at the plat book and want to see undeveloped property in the vicinity of Grand Marais, we don't have any more. And the people that are interested in paying $200,000 for a lot, they're the same folks that are hiring me to write a construction contract for a simple $5 million build. That's, that's the type of money that is interested in this property. That's the demographic that cares. And so when we talk about, well, you know, our development cost to build a road, I know we've got old numbers in there in the low 150s, rough estimate now, 300s for a road to city spec with, with fiber and power coming along that easement corridor. That's what, that's what John's analysis is when he's trying to decide what to do with his property. This, you all know, this case started 10 years ago. I've been on it for the last five. He has always wanted to pursue a transfer of this property to the public. But he also wants to get his money back. I know you talked about the price he paid last time. We know what that is. He's got development costs and he'd like to make a little on it. I told you that we'd give you an option. One of those two is for the county to buy it. We don't care where the money comes from, if it's a combination of county, state, federal, land trust, some other funding source I'm not aware of, but the number he's willing to buy, to sell to you for right now is 475,000. That is a big difference from what we expect he will get from the market if he's selling these at two and a quarter a pop, times eight. That math is simple. If you don't want to spend the money, and I, there's arguments that are very reasonable on all sides of this. I get it. That's acceptable. But if we're not in a purchase conversation, we should be talking about a development conversation. Because I don't like where the Platted Street is for the purpose of the construction of that access road. And that's, if you want to look at the next page, it's the map of Cook County. This is a map I got from, by way of Scott at the Highway Department years ago of what the county roads and tow roads were in 1939. And I've highlighted the road that is the existing access road, quote unquote, that we're talking about. My view as the developer's attorney and also as a landowner's attorney opposing development is always that the best place to put a road is where there already is one. Because you know, if someone was using hand tools to build a road in 1930, that's probably going to be the least disruptive or simplest route to get from A to B. I heard, Commissioner Mills, I heard you talking about, you know, proposing an alternative route that'd be closer to the north side of the property and to be less impactful on the Sawtooth Bluff part. If you look at the last, second to last page, which is that survey that you've had before, or I should call it a draft in a survey, actually it's not signed yet. The reason you can't really go north of that yellow line if you walk that is that is a fen or bog or, it's, it's a tremendous wetland. And I'm willing to bet that that yellow line represents the top of an esker or a bluff that's holding all that water back and sending it east and west. You can't build north of that. It would be, it would be terribly foolish, both from an environmental standpoint as well as a, well as just the road building cost standpoint. So in your, in your box of decisions, one is, John's willing to sell this. I forgot to mention, he's willing to sell or finance that 475 price too. They'll give you a contract, you can tie up the property, take three years to figure out how you're going to pay for it, whether that's on terms, whatever. That's the step he's willing to make to make sure this stays in county hands. But if that's not what we're talking about because the board decides it's not a good use of money or it's not appropriate or we have not enough, we have not enough private property in our tax basis in county already and we need to add to it and this development, if approved, would, I don't know, round numbers figure 2 million a house, times eight, that's simple math, that's a big addition to our county tax base. If we're not talking about that, we're talking about moving the road. My perspective, again, is if I look at the hillside, I see two types of improvements. I see the power line that runs to the radio towers. Everybody can see that because that runs perpendicular to the elevation, the country lines. Big, big observable impact. Alternatively, if I look at, there's that new house, it's owned by the Thompson family maybe, it's on the hillside. You can see the house, you can't see their driveway. The reason you can't see their driveway is it runs parallel to the grade and is hidden by the trees on all sides. The yellow route is what we prefer, that's hidden because it's running essentially parallel to the grade. The blue route, which is where we have our right to construct under a tanking order, is not. That will be visible and to my view is quite a bit more damaging because we're making these big left and right-hand corners at those intersections of the streets at the bottom of steep slope hills. That's a, that's an expensive road to build. It's not impossible. I think you heard from Mitch Travis last time that it's, you know, it's not great, but it's doable. I agree. But I really think if you want to see this land stay in private hands, considering an exchange whereby we agree to release our right to the Platted easements, you can have them, we don't want them, just give us an ingress egress right over that existing tow road, we'll build our road there and start selling lots. So happy to answer any questions. So we've got this file for a while. I'm trying to summarize just what I think is relevant and necessary for you going forward, but we're an open book. If you want to know it, if you know it, we'll tell you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Mr. Chair, do you think it'd be advisable to have a, a response to put some things in, you know, juxtaposes as to, you know, if Bob were to speak, do you, do you think that'd be advantageous or do you think, in other words, it would, it would give context as basically a response for the board and then we'd ask questions based upon that perspective? Or do we want to just ask questions and then Bob can talk?
Well, I'd, I'd rather not have it be a back and forth as far as I think this, I think that. But if you have some more context that, that you would like to add beyond what, what we talked about at the Committee of the Whole, I'd gladly welcome that. And then, and then certainly I, I hope that we have questions to ask both Tyson and Mr. Chief as well as Assessor Thompson. So is there, is there anything you, you would like to add, Bob?
I guess I just want to respond to the, the comparable, you know, the, the suggestion that the comparables that I chose might, might not have, they were adversarial in Tyson's words. What, what I did and I made it clear in that meeting was that I just swapped the comparables out and continued to use the, the same adjustments that the appraiser used in the chief appraisal. So it was really just a matter of comparable, one versus the other. And I know that Mr. Tyson had, had indicated that the property up on County Road 7 doesn't have a lake view. I actually live across the street, I've lived across the street from that property for about six years. And up on the hillside, there is a, a pretty good view. Even at the bottom of the driveway, there's a seasonal view. So I do just want to respond with, with those two comments about the selection of the comp grid that I put together. As far as the two options that have been laid out, I think that I, I kind of expected that those would be the two options that, that were most desired by the, by Mr. Chief. So, you know, I'm, I'm happy to answer more questions, you know, regarding the, the Committee of the Whole discussion regarding the utility, the, the ability to put utilities across those public dedications. That was a conversation that our former interim administrator had with Arrowhead Electric and they said, we don't have any information of easements across those properties. At this point, we would have to see documentation that would, that would make us okay with putting in electrical easements. So that's where that comment came from. And I do believe, you know, we, we had kind of left it that this would take more interpretation by the county attorney at that time.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Bob. And, and thank you. And I appreciate the conversation. I think it's said it in the Committee of the Whole too. I appreciate John's forbearance through this because it was something I was dealing with as a commissioner in my first term. And so when it came up, I went, you've got to be kidding me. You mean, we're still dithering with that? But I think we're dealing with it in the context of, that should be pointed out, your, your willingness to try to work together for a win-win, you know, resolve. And that doesn't always happen, so that should be noted relative to wanting to be formed on, informed on our end of things relative to what can and cannot be done in our Committee of Whole, that if we ask the provider and the provider actually said themselves, from our understanding, and you've clarified that based upon the rule of law, and we are elected basically to uphold ordinance, rule of law and make decisions in the context of what we know to be true based upon the rule of law and its application, which is defined by precedent. So that's helpful in making a decision. I think what this all boils down to over the period of time that we've dealt with this is, as it relates right now, if there were properties that could be swapped out that felt that it was, you know, be good for both parties, then we would look at doing that and that's been explored. Right now, the, what's before us is an opportunity to pursue either outright purchase, some combination with the conservator, the, using the land conservation program. And John, in our brief conversation during our break, 14-minute break, we talked about the fact that the position of commissioners is, is a lot more complicated now than it used to be. And, and so here we are with mixed messages. One is that the community and public comment and, and feedback is, don't touch that hill, it's sacred. Let it be what it is. We've got a lot of sacred land in Cook County. It's, is land that the government owns that we basically have no control over. And we have very few, as pointed out, parcels that we can generate revenue from. Those parcels that we do have, that are government-owned land that are about 92%, those parcels, they're debating whether or not they want to meet their in-good-faith commitment on giving this county revenue to operate because so much of the land belongs to government. And so when we look at it and we say, well, what land do we have available that we can generate revenue? If we have undeveloped land that is ours to make a determination on, that could generate revenue at this price point of house, if you want to look at, through just that lens, this is an opportunity to mitigate some of the levy impact by having more people share the load. That's if you want to look at it from that standpoint. If you want to look at it from the aesthetic standpoint and say, let's take this off the potential revenue generating just so we can visually see that and do what is attractive to people because there's no development, that's in conflict with two things that we're entrusted to try to protect. The aesthetic and what draws people here and trying to generate revenue. So we have to prioritize based upon what we feel is most valuable to us as a, as a county. That's sort of what, what I, I see this as. If we do the, if we take the conservatory approach to it, we have financial obligation that we have to assume relative to maintenance of that property, as I understand it. So if you want to boil it right down, I think it's just, it's a decision of- So, if you want to boil it right down, I think it's just, it's a decision of, do we want to contribute to our foundation of revenue? Or do we want to contribute to the aesthetic? That's what it comes down to. And if we say, "Can we find a middle ground that allows both of those things?" I think if we take a decision that says no development, we need to understand, we just took something else off there that is a potential revenue source for us. And we don't have very many of them. We don't have very many. So, it's a decision, you know, we're caught between two forces that are pushing us one way or the other. What are we going to do about it? And we've got an individual that's been very patient in trying to find a way out of this, and if we, as a board, can't make a decision so that he can move forward, then, under the rule of law, he can move forward in the context of what the provision of the rule of law provides. So, that's my thoughts.
Okay. Commissioner White.
So this seems to be a sense of position, situation, is what do we value? Do we value the environment? This is a unique piece of geography, that there might be more pieces. I mean, yeah, there are more bluffs, and there are more in the county. But when we're talking about revenue for the county, we need that. But our NIVA just presented a possibility for cluster housing, for increasing housing with the same amount of, the same amount of land that we already have. So, once something is developed, it is developed. I mean, and it is gone. And there will be people, there are people, everybody wants to come to Cook County, we have the natural beauty, we have all sorts of things. But people will come with the means to buy whatever they want, wherever they want, at any price. There are people like that, and I'm sure of it. And it's not a reflection on the quality of the person, or anything like that, but it's just the fact that our land is becoming increasingly cost prohibitive for a single person to buy land. We've got that. But we have that bluff, which for decades has been recognized by, and there have been county meetings on this, community meetings on this, as being pretty unique and pretty important. And aesthetics matter. I mean, otherwise, we could just pave a whole lot of, whole lot of existing land, and we could, I don't know, we need more, we should do a parking ramp, we'd have more parking space, and, I mean, we could do all sorts of things. But once land is developed, it is developed. And particularly, something so obvious, so beautiful, who wouldn't want to have that? I get that. But I believe we need to, we are entrusted to help take care of community, our community's natural resources. We'll find out, figure out how to build houses other ways, but to build it on that prime piece of property. And I so appreciate your willingness to be patient through all the years, and you're not, that you're not gung-ho on just developing it. I just can't thank you enough for that. So, I just, whatever he needs, that we have control over that property, I think that's not, that's not the way you negotiate, I get that. But I believe we need, and it could change with a new board going down into history here, or going down into the future, but at this moment in time, I am adamantly opposed to development on that hill. So, I have nothing more to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. And I think it's important to, you know, to express what we feel we represent relative to constituent. I think if we, well, very difficult to do, but if we take the emotion out of decision-making, and we just put things down, and you're looking at it from an evaluation standpoint, the facts of the matter are, is we have very little that we can develop. If I'm a hardware store, and I only have so many square feet, I'm going to look at trying to put in items that are going to give me the best return on my stock, my investment. What I mean, the stock, the stuff that I inventory and I sell. And if I make more money selling this, I'm going to use the limited square feet to do that. So it comes down into the black and white, is saying, if we do the layover, the innovative way of making our parcels grouped, that is with the intent, the focus, is trying to create affordable housing, which means that you can make the assumption that those are going to be lower-priced properties, and therefore generate less revenue. Then when you take prime, and you say, "Wow," using the hardware analogy, "I can put this in my store, and I can get a whole lot more for that, for something that we need." So I'm just saying, in black and white, the decision comes down to, do we serve revenue base, or do we serve aesthetic? That's what it comes down to. So we just have to make that decision. And if we say, "Let's purchase for four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars," where does that money come from? If it comes from the people that are burdened right now, with too much on their shoulders, trying to fund things that we do, we make decisions, then it's a double whammy. It's, "We're going to take taxpayer dollars to buy something that is going to actually contribute to their financial, you know, responsibility, and not alleviate the cost of running government." And so, that's something that needs to be pointed out, if we do that, it's a double take on it. And if we had somebody come up and say, "I really believe in the aesthetic, and I am willing, I am willing to buy that land," which then, if we own it, I don't know the basis under which we could, we aren't going to pay tax on it if we own it. And so, it's going to go off the roll, which is, what, eight hundred some, eight hundred sixteen dollars a year? I think that's generated by that property. But what it could generate, you know, that's what you need to look at, is just black and white, non-emotional, black and white. But if somebody came up and said, "It means enough, let's start a GoFundMe online, and let's generate the money, and see if we can't raise that money, we'll buy it, take it off there, and protect, without it costing, although the projectable potential for revenue is not calculated into that," then that might be a way of trying to alleviate the burden of having taxpayer dollars that are paying money right now, have to buy something that's going to take revenue potential to alleviate burden on levy.
Commissioner White.
So, we're talking about change, I mean, the culture of this county has been changing for a long time, really changing. And so, people that have lived here for a long time, they don't move here, so they can be surrounded by, or be, some people would like to move here, and the reality of actually being able to afford, to build here and to live here, is a little different than what is imagined. But even if you had one person who said, "I will buy this, and I will make certain that it doesn't get developed," everybody dies. And the descendants of that person who bought it will say, "Hey, Uncle Phil said that this was supposed to, we're not going to, we're not going to, I like it this how it is." And then the, his descendants say, "You know, times are hard, where I live down here, and wherever I live, Alabama, or wherever it may be, I think we ought to sell, we can make a whole lot of money." There are no guarantees. But at this moment in time, we, as elected officials, have an opportunity to help hold on to a really, and I'm not being emotional about this, so there's, I live in the middle of the woods, it's a beautiful county, there are bluffs everywhere along the shoreline when you drive on it. But this is one that many people recognize as a component of the landscape of Grand Murray, and of what you grew up with. Now, yes, we had a ski hill on there at one time, but a south-facing ski slope is kind of hard to keep snow on way back when. So, but at this moment in time, we will find money. I mean, if we're going to do a GoFundMe, maybe people would, if you throw that out there, "GoFundMe for the county to own it." I don't know, but I just think, once it is sold to a developer, it's gone. It is gone. And there's a lot of other property that people could buy, that have spectacular views of the county. Go east of town, you're up there. You're not on the lake, but there are actually properties on the lakeshore, east of town, that are available to be purchased, also.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner White. I wasn't suggesting that somebody, although it's an alternative, somebody buy it and own it. I'm suggesting if a donor or benefactor wanted to come up and give the money to county to buy it, that's what I'm saying. Because I agree with you, that somebody else buys it, that, and there's places in Wisconsin with beautiful pines, or whatever, and then it was bequeathed to kids, and next week, all those trees are cut down, and people are going, "Oh, my goodness, we thought that'd be there forever." So, that's a reality. But when you're weighing, you know, things, you're looking at it, if it's the only recourse, you take that risk, it's measured risk. But in the case where it's a donation, because people, yes, we believe in it, so GoFundMe says, "All you people that believe it, then let's find something that can do that, that ensures that that land stays with the county." The only thing about that is, is with very little land, it's taking something else away from a very small inventory. But if we feel that that's valuable, and you understand the aesthetic of it from a tourist attraction standpoint, benefits a few, but not the whole. So, and yet, you know, as we had in public comment this morning, that's somebody that's been here, somebody that works in forestry, and it's sacred to them, so it has benefits certainly here, so.
And, excuse me, one last statement, and then I'm done. Are we going to have infinite growth? We cannot grow forever. People cannot continue to live, think they're going to move here and get to own a piece of property. There's only so much property, so much, and we don't have the big density, I get that, and we never will. But at some point, we'll max out. I have no idea what that amount would be. But I don't believe that bluff is here exclusively for the tourists. It is, it is an integral part of this county, and has been, well, forever, so.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, I really agree with you, Commissioner White. I think this is a very important place in Cook County, the bluff. And as you talked about Ms. Maxwell's overlay design, and the fact that we have other ways we can develop, and that is for affordable housing, does not bring in as much tax dollar to the county. But one of the key components of Ms. Maxwell's plan is the importance of green space, that fifty percent of all of those parcels remain in green space. And I think green space is important to the people who have lived here for many years. I also think it's important for the people that are here today, and for people that will come here in the future. Maybe not for the eight people that would purchase those ten-acre parcels, but I think for many, many others, it is a very, very valuable thing.
Yeah, please.
I'm sorry.
No, not at all.
But, community, we need to talk about community, and there are many second homes, very expensive second homes, that taxes are paid on. And the people who own those properties don't come here. They don't visit, they don't live here. I mean, I know there is one place east of town, that in ten years of plowing the driveways so Coma Oil could get in, never once was there any evidence that anyone had ever been in that place. Big, beautiful place, and the person was from out of state. And that is not how, you might have big expensive homes, but do you, what type of, just like the, when we have the, when we have the vacation rentals, and now we have houses that sit empty, and you don't have regular residents that live there all the time, that impacts community. And community has more value than, I mean, we'll figure it out, how to, I mean, and it might not be nice, might be very difficult, but I believe, who are the people that will, what will their incentive be to be integrated into the community, once they build something? Like, truly part of the community? And that worries me.
Commissioner Mills, I have a few follow-up points that might be helpful.
Yeah, well, before we get there, I too want to echo what Commissioner White is just, the gratitude for, and your patience for the process, your intentions for community use, or public use. And I had a couple of questions, if that's okay, before you respond, Tyson. So I lean towards wanting to get it into public hands as well. There's no way we can afford four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's, I mean, I guess if there's a GoFundMe or something, but just the reality of our budget talks, and the state of affairs at both the state and federally, it's going to be difficult in the coming years to make our services whole. I understand that with the preferred easement, the conservation easement would have a higher value, but even with that, the conservation easement will not provide the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I guess I was wondering if you have explored, and, you know, you don't want to waste your time, so maybe you haven't yet, but if you've explored other county-owned properties with anything in mind for some kind of land swap, and I know that's not your first preference by any means, but I'm just trying to figure out ways to accomplish what we're all trying to, what we're all mostly trying to accomplish.
I think there's a couple of things I could say about that.
And go ahead, yes.
Start from the back. Land swap was on the table a while ago, it has, it popped its head up every now and again. The issue is, if we have such a fundamental disagreement on value, it just doesn't make sense to us to come to the table, when it feels, as I said, like a real adversarial approach to what the value is. As to the desire...
So that's a no?
Well, David, you know, I've been through the exchange thing, you know, for a long, long time, in multiple different ways. And I did take a look at the current tax forfeited parcels that Bob provided. You know, I was open-minded to it, I just don't think that it's there. Tyson points out, you know, one particular, you know, big difference, and the suitability of it. And, you know, even the main reason why, you know, Betty Schultz in particular was a very sensitive, reluctant to get involved in exchanges, is simply the time and the difficulty in it. It may be well beyond just us, you know, as a group. State is, has to be involved in this. I did do an exchange, you know, because I had done one, I didn't think that it was quite so bad, but it's not that easy. I mean, the DNR just goes through every department, and they all have to, so it's not easy. I think, you know, we've got, you know, a pretty clear choice here. You know, I understand about the money, that's why, you know, I was open to, you know, scaling it out over a period of time, kind of, you know, figure it out. You know, I also was well aware of, you know, just reading the local paper, you know, in recent years, how much monies had been coming down from federal, state, and so forth, and you had an article in the paper, and Brady always has, you know, a review of different things, in terms of pockets of money, some of which, you know, pennies from heaven. Now, that was a year or two ago, and now we've got a new administration in Washington, which, you know, may put that money in jeopardy. I'm not sure, but... But, um, that was not an impediment to me in terms of where the money might come from, you know, for, for the county. You know, $100,000 is not trivial amount of money, but, you know, in the big scope and in looking at it over a period of time, and taking into account what you've said, you know, about the overall community impact. When we talked about this, Gary, 10 years ago, in 2013, I came before the, the council and asked for an easement. Well, there were at least a half a dozen, you know, write-ins, Amy Wilfart, maybe Carol Pratt, Sue Abrahams, people up on Old Ski Hill Road. So, this is a, this is a bit, much bigger issue than, you know, well, it is, it's development or not development. And, and that is a big issue. And I've been mulling this, you know, for years, and it's part of the reason why I didn't go cartway, because that would have been just, you know, it would have pit private land, or that would have been the first choice. Bring, you know, the county would say, well, we have to go non-tax forfeited parcel to go private. Those parcels impacted would be just in an uproar. And so, um, I, I think that you all, as a group, have to come to grips with what Bob's talking about. Bob's the assessor. You know, he's the county employee. It, it's almost like you have to, you know, respond to, to what he's saying. But at the same time, I think you have to put your independent hat on. One of the reasons why, in fact, the principal reason why we did the subdivision, you all can take a look at a 10-acre parcel, you can just read the paper. There's all kinds of 10-acre parcels around. You can form your own opinion as to whether or not a, a parcel's worth X or Y. But an 80-acre parcel, that's not so easy to do. Just, just think about that, that parcel up there on Sawtooth Bluff. It's 2,800 and, 2,680 feet, so it's two quarters side by side. The one that Bob used as the comparable is only 1,320 feet. In order to get the other 1,320 to be equal, he has to climb that, that hill. Maybe he can do it, but it costs money. That's just another reason why the, the appraisal which was done is very problematic. And it's the only one among these three that has any credibility at all. This fills up a piece of paper, which you guys were shown a couple of meetings ago at the committee of the whole, as if it's a, an appraisal. This, this is not helpful, because it sets up a context for you that shows a value of 120,000, and, and I'm coming to you and saying, well, gee, it's a bargain at 475. How's that? So, you know, you have to determine where the credibility is on this. And I think you've all been around well enough to know what values are, and, and what has happened in, you know, the last, say, since the pandemic, since 2021. You know, is it fair to say that, that a lot up there is worth $200,000? The appraiser that I happened to hire says yes. You know, we, we think so. And so, you know, the county, Gary and I, Gary was the one that actually phrased the, the term win-win. He said, you know, we ought to think about this in a win-win context.
Just to qualify that, I never, I never came up with that. I used it, I borrowed it, I borrowed it.
In the context of, let's say, my interface, you know, with the commissioners, the county and so forth, you were the first one, those words out of your mouth. So, um, the win-win. So, the county, in my opinion, wins with a much discounted price, in terms of, you know, I could go ahead and develop up there, make a lot more money. So, you know, out of my pocket, it's a big discount. From the county's perspective, you might say, hey, that doesn't sound like much of a discount. I, that's for you to decide. From my perspective, I've sort of won, maybe you could say won, because the legal access is already there. We're not talking about legal access here. The legal process, much to my surprise, turns out, this old plat exists. I mean, that is a surprising development. But in any event, um, and, you know, there's also, you might say some, let's say, community joy in facilitating something like this. And of course, the park, you know, was developed, that idea, and it, it fit. There, there was a, a fit in that. So, that's it.
I need to follow up on the financing component. I touched on this briefly, I want to say it now. Your, Commissioner Mills, your point that the county just doesn't have the money, we understand that, recognize that, that's why we propose seller financing. You sign a contract for deed, you've got time to figure it out. If you can't get it done, well, you lose what you paid, which is nothing. And if you can get it done, when the contract is up, the money's there, property's yours. It gives you what you want, it gives you time to figure out how you can do it, satisfying everybody's goals.
Thank you. Yeah, and, um, at, at some point, and for some, maybe sooner than later, the valuation is, is, is critical to this discussion. For me, not as much. It, it is absolutely a factor, but we have to decide what we're aiming for, and, and then, when we decide that, how might we be able to make that happen? So, that's why I was trying to look at all the options, uh, you know, and it doesn't have to be just one. It could be all three. It could be, uh, land exchange, conservation easement, and money. You know, it, there's, there's lots of different ways to, I think, try to approach this. And again, valuation absolutely will be important, but it's just not where my mind is at right now, and I could be an outlier, so that's that. Commissioner Campbell, you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, um, underscore the importance of the conversation, so many issues, you know, that, that, that we deal with in having a conversation with people that are informed, and, and also just to recognize that, that in our zoning department, we entrust responsibility to an individual to represent, you know, our best interests in the context of the rule of law and what state statute says, which you can appreciate. And so, he's, he's our representative, and, uh, we, we weigh decisions based upon the information we get, we ask to go back and take a look at it. Couple of things I'll, I'll note here is that, that we're in discussions, multiple Arrowhead counties, well, state counties, and, and throughout the federal government, the counties that are discussing the issue of payment in lieu of taxes. And when we look at it at the state level with the Ty Blacknick, the issue of payment in lieu of taxes.
That's federal.
That's federal.
That's federal, yeah. But when we have those discussions, it is a debate about, what are you evaluating it at? What are you using for your numbers? And we just want it to be a fair, and sometimes when it comes to that, in other examples, like in relations, employee relations, we have policies in place that say, we'll go to arbitration. In other words, let's bring in somebody that's credible and do an evaluation in good faith that we find out what we think the fair market value is of this, and in present-day economy. So, that, that would be an option. If, I don't know if, if the funding mechanism, if our county attorney knows anything relative to whether or not we as a county can use a funding source, an online funding source.
Not like a GoFundMe.
Yeah. See, so, so those things, other than if we don't use something like that, and we were to just say, if there's that many people out there that care about the bluff, are you willing to, you know, to the extent that we can in the context of the provision of rule of law as a county entity, to take revenues to be able to fund this?
There are, um, I don't want to get it on the spot, but the, there are definitely restrictions and prohibitions against the way that a government entity can seek donations from the pub, from the public, even for specific use. So, I can give you a more thorough and comprehensive answer on that, but in short, probably no.
Okay, and thank you for that. If, if an individual out there said, boy, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna take this, and we're gonna be that, and then we'll just come and make that donation, they, they wouldn't be prohibited from doing that, because it's their intent to do that. They could in fact buy the land and then give the land to the county. In other words, what we're saying is, we're not saying, let's circumvent the rule of law. We need to follow practices that demonstrate integrity. But that doesn't mean that there can't be a discussion to find out how could be, in the context of the provision of the rule of law, and still accomplish what we're trying to do, which is multifaceted, not create tax burden with monies we don't have, but where could we generate these monies? If we look at a payment plan, then it's still, the money has to come somewhere, but it's, it's a provision to us that we might not be able to get elsewhere. We're bonding and doing so many things where it's money, we gotta manage all of this. But the, and, and when you set your price, John, on, on this, and if you look at it, if we said, well, we're talking about everything, this is just an open discussion, respectful, if, if there's any tax advantage, and you've probably been through this, that, that where a portion of that could be written off through proper channels. So, what we're looking at, how can we do all of this to find that win-win situation, where we, it seems that it's pretty obvious that we want to protect that bluff. So, that's, we've made that our top priority. Our priority isn't generating revenue, it's protecting that bluff. There can be some residual ripple effect of protecting the bluff that comes back in dollars, but I'm talking about development for high-end houses. So, if the board says, we want to protect it, we've sort of reached that conclusion based upon conversation, now how do we get there? How do we get there to find that win-win, and still try to protect the other thing that we talked about, which is not putting this burden on things that we get to make decisions on using somebody else's money? So, that's a conversation I'd, I'd like to see us say. If we want to say that in good faith, our intent is amongst all the option, is to want to own that, we want to own it as a county, so we can control it and not put it in anybody else's hands, just how do we do that? If that's the consensus of the board, then I think we need to move forward with, in good faith, the intent of purchasing it, how can we do it?
Conservation easement's a good idea. I confess, I got tired of banging my head against the wall with the land trust when they said, this is our appraisal, we're absolutely not going to show it to you, but here are the comps we used, which, again, it just, were not realistic to the market as we see transact every day. There are other conservation organizations. The county is, under chapter 87, I think, authorized to be the holder of the conservation easement as a public entity. There's a lot of ways to get this problem solved. We're happy to work with you to make it happen. We're happy to give you time and, and bind our hands from selling it to anybody else so you can do it. But my observation is, we've pushed as hard as we can with the stakeholders, and they're tired of talking to us. They don't want to hear from us anymore. I worked really hard, this is two years ago, to push the county to step into our shoes a little bit, and push back on the land trust and say, hey, folks, you know, what Tyson's saying about your appraisal really has some validity based on what we know, and what every broker in Cook County will tell you. But we had a wall. So, guess what I'm saying is, maybe it's time to pass the torch. If you want to figure it out, we'd love to help you.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to comment about the Minnesota Land Trust. And, and this is kind of a sore point with me, and, so, I, I'll avoid a lot of the, the backdrop, but I guess the, the thing that came to the head, bothered me, is the appraisal. So, when you approached the Minnesota Land Trust, they say there's going to be an appraisal. Yeah. What I expected was that I would be provided a copy of the appraisal, and I'd be able to review it. Maybe I'd go out and actually even take a look at some of the comparables, you know, that were in it. It's not the case. The Minnesota Land Trust does not provide a written appraisal to the landowner. I didn't find that out until I received. This is what they give you, a piece of paper, describes where the location is, and it says a before value, which is what you would look at the property, you know, just as it is, and then an after value. And they, they, that after is defined as what it would be after the restrictions that are defined in the conservation easement. I had almost nothing in the conservation easement. Tim, Tim is well aware of it also. Anyway, that's an after value, and then the difference is this valued of rights acquired. The Minnesota Land Trust came up with 165,000 as a before value. The after value was 71,000, which meant that the development rights was 94,000. So, that's what Minnesota Land Trust has said, we're willing to pay to you. Now, I went to, there's a lot of personnel issues involved also, but I went to Pat and said, so, can you tell me a little bit about the comps? Not really, no. He said, all I can tell you is the section that the, that the comparable was in. Two of the comparables were in Section 5 West, Sugarloaf Cove, the border, you'd go to your grocery shopping in Silver Lake, Silver Bay. One of them was 3 East, one of them was pretty good, actually, not too far from here, east of town. That one, incidentally, had a, a transaction date in early 2020, kind of before the, the movement in price. So, when I, when I realized that this was not a, an appraisal that I was comfortable with at all, uh, I, basically, I was very abrupt and, and direct with Pat about how I felt it was an unethical process, in that they go, they control the entire appraisal process, say, here's what we think it's worth, you take it or leave it. And, you know, we'll talk to you a little bit about, well, you know, it's here, or, you know, in a certain, but there's not any depth of, of description about it. And, and he was second place anyway to the appraiser. So, I was very, very upset about that, and, and told him so. So, that essentially was the primary reason why I, I let it drop. Now, as a few months rolled on, um, I wrote him an email, I wrote Pat Collins back. Bob has seen it, Tim has seen it, I ought to give it to you guys also. It was a request for a second appraisal, because the judgment by determining the plat up there now, there's free public access through the tax forfeited parcels to the property. Now, to me, that's- parcels to the property. Now, to me, that seemed like a pretty significant event. Because the arrangement that we had signed with the county originally, with the conservation easement and all, was for, you know, a, an acknowledgement of access, not like a, you know, fully dedicated public road. So, I went back to Pat, and, you know, I said, would you do a reappraisal? And I even got John Oberholzer, John Oberholzer, who's a realtor out in Tofti, he's on the board. And I sat down with him, and I actually gave him this email also, and he went to Chris Larson, who is the, the head of the Minnesota Land Trust. No, they, they were not, you know, they're, they're just doing what they're doing. Now, when I've met with Tim, and, and Mitch, and some of the others, and Bob, I said, you know, it's easy for a person in an organization like the Minnesota Land Trust to say, we have our rules, and, you know, this guy, he's, he's just one guy, you know, we're not going to bend for this. And, you know, I said, you know, Bob, or somebody, and, and it may well be some kind of communication from you, we feel that a reappraisal is wanted. And, you know, you know, request that on behalf of the reasons, much like Deb, you have articulated, essentially a community, in posterity, message, that, you know, this is something that, you know, we'd like to, you know, put before you, as a funding source, okay, call it that, but as a cooperative, and, and that's in essence what I was saying in this email, that this is, it's even, it's kind of broader than just Cook County, because the entire state of Minnesota looks at Grand Marais and that bluff as a sense of identity. So, the, the Minnesota Land Trust was created by the voice of the people. That Lassard-Samstein, every county, you're probably well aware of this, approved it, again, to fund, you know, that, that source of funding. $94,000 for that bluff is, is, you know, I mean, it's, but the point is, they could easily, easily have an appraisal that would be much more significant, and balancing some contribution from the county, you know, with, with that as a funding source. There is a, there is a common purpose there between Cook County and the Minnesota Land Trust, which is, it, it's, well, it's obvious, I think, to all of us. In my opinion, it's, it's a, it's different, but it's much more significant than the Lake Superior 25 acres that was just set up as a scientific area there, and several hundred thousand dollars that Minnesota Land Trust did for that. You know, this happens to be a hill. Now, that was, you know, right next to Lake Superior, it's a fen, and has scienc, but, you know, you could make a lot of cases that those are very comparable kinds of, of properties, for the benefit of the public. So, I guess what I'm saying is, through the right voice and channel, Bob was one, but Bob did not put the question the way I would have. Bob said, and, and Bob, you should say what you said, but what you told me, if I'm paraphrasing right, he just said, are you interested in continuing to do the, the, you know, the conservation easement with John Sheaf? And they said, well, okay. I want, and proposed, a completely new appraisal, based on different facts and circumstances, which are totally different, not totally different. When, when the, when Cook County granted the easement in December of 2020, there was access there. Now, there's been this court judgment, there's a plat of roads up there. That's a completely different set of, okay. So, I, I'm just saying that there is justification to request a, you know, another appraisal. And to me, I think that's very important, how that is done, whether it's done through the chair, or, you know, that's, you know, up to you to decide, but.
Chair has no power, it's all board, so.
Yeah.
So what year was that appraisal done?
Yeah.
2020 was the appraisal?
Yeah. 2020, the, the date of the Minnesota Land Trust appraisal was March 2022.
2022, okay. And so I was just wondering if there's a time limit on the appraisal, if at a certain point, no, it's forever, oh, okay. And I appreciate the 94,000, because in my mind, then we're not talking 475,000, we're talking 375,000-ish, you know, so that's just how my mind works. And, and so I appreciate that, that insight. And yeah, it sounds like another appraisal could be warranted, but there's no guarantees. That appraisal was presumably with the, the straight, you know, not the preferred, or?
There's been some confusion about access. I've, I've been told that they appraise it as though it, it had access, but the, it just doesn't seem to me like anybody really listened or agreed to that until we get the court order. And of course, there hasn't been an appraisal since then.
Right, right. Okay. But, Bob, was there something, did I see a signal you wanted to say anything, or no?
Yeah, I, I guess there were a few things I just wanted to follow up. Mr. Sheaf is right, in the conversation that I had with Pat, I did not push for a new appraisal. I did ask if they had reconsidered the value after the Hanky, Judge Hanky's ruling on the access, and he said that no, and to, to, in his own words, he said, they are not budging on their valuation of the property. So, you know, I get it that there has been time that has gone past, and certainly there's been some market appreciation. You know, when I look at the appraisal that I have, that was actually paid for and contracted by Mr. Sheaf, it's not the land trust appraisal. Even that uses older comparables than, you know, what I had put into my comp grid. I, I do think I have a suggestion, because I'm not sure that the, the board hasn't indicated to me that they've made a, a, a decision on this yet, but what if, I, so I think, and I'm totally in agreement, that if those parcels were sold off with access, they'd be 200,000 plus, there's no doubt in my mind. So, you know, 1.6 million, but that's assuming access to each parcel. You know, I, I know that in this appraisal I looked at, it only is, is giving a rough estimate of cutting in access to the edge of the parcel. I don't believe it goes to the end, because that would be over a mile long. I think an appropriate step would be, A, to have a contractor give a bid for a road along their preferred access route, and a contractor to give a bid along the streets and alleyways. The difference in those two values to me is the value of this preferred access route. Probably slightly less, because obviously, if it comes out to be a wash, then, you know, what's the point of getting a preferred access route? I do think that the development will be cheaper along the preferred route, because it is pre-developed, that's kind of overgrown, and it would just be a matter of kind of getting in there and bringing it up to today's standards, whereas the streets and alleyways is obviously going to traverse, you know, land that hasn't been disturbed in many years, probably since they logged it years and years and years ago. So, that would be one suggestion, is, let's find out what the access will actually cost to build. Right now, what we have is a rough estimate from a range of 20 to 35 dollars, and they said, we're going to estimate the road construction costs at 30 dollars a foot, and going X number of feet. And that's where I think there's truly maybe room to, to improve upon the actual number of what a contractor is willing to put on paper, that they would go in and develop those roads for. So, then, then the board would have a good idea of, you know, what's the value of this parcel with the access? Because right now, it's two different opinion, three different opinions, actually, with the Minnesota Land Trust. And I think that, that knowing what the cost of those roads would be, would really be useful to this board. And also, another suggestion I have is, if it's flagged off up there, I know at one point, there was some flagging done by a surveyor, I think it's worthwhile for some of us to go up there and take a peek at it. Let's, let's walk these streets and alleyways, let's walk this preferred route, and let's get a feel for what that, what that impact would be. You know, from what I'm hearing is that, you know, without, without the Minnesota Land Trust reconsidering the value and, and doing an appraisal that Mr. Sheaf sees as more favorable, that's just not going to be an option. So, really, what we're talking about is either purchasing it, or granting that preferred easement, which they're indicating will have less impact on the sawtooth bluffs. If we do go the route of, of giving that preferred access easement, and we're not getting the, the land in exchange with the, with the conservation easement, I think we have to go back to 28204, Minnesota statute 28204, where that easement would have to be paid for, because it's public land.
Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Bob. A couple of things, observation, given the discussion. It seems that the will of the board is that we want to preserve that land. That takes the development issue out of it. So the only thing relative to access and easement and cost is in connection with the evaluation, because it's not something we want to do.
Evaluation for the land trust, which, evaluation for the land trust.
That's right.
Right, which they don't want to redo unless we ask for it, maybe as a board.
Right, yeah. And this is just me speaking for myself, but I don't want to go the land trust route. And the reason I don't want to go the land trust route, is it puts a burden on the county. We have, we have to comply with the requirements that they put in place, which means that, that we have to maintain that. Am I wrong on that?
If you read the conservation easement, the requirement of maintenance, number one, is obligated by the land trust, and two, to the extent that the county is obligated to maintain the fee, we're talking about clearing trails once a decade. It's a nominal expense. I don't think maintenance in a conservation easement should be of any concern to the board, because it just isn't there.
Okay. And I, and I appreciate, you know, putting that in context, but when I read the agreement there, it, we as a county become responsible based upon what they define for us. If the reality of that, as opposed to looking at the big words, is that it just means this, whatever. The other component of it, in our decision-making, which we haven't discussed of, but we're mindful of, is whether or not this park development is something that, that proceeds or not. But, I, I would say, I mean, I would say that if the board is in agreement, and to try to move this forward, that, and this is for discussion, but I would be willing to make a motion saying that it is our intent, in other words, if we're going to put substance to what our conversation has been, that we want to purchase it. And if, if we are not comfortable with the appraised price, that we would hire an individual that we mutually agree to, to do an appraisal. That's where this context of access and everything else would come into it. We could do that if we're more comfortable, or we could just say, we make a motion with a known fact of 475, that that's the purchase price, and if we want to do it in conjunction with a land trust as part of the source, and put it out there, anybody wanted, the community wants to do whatever. It just, in good faith, we would make a motion saying that it's our intent to purchase it. How we do that from this point on is yet to be determined, but we, we want you to know, this is the direction that closes the door on what's going to happen. And, and then we just got to figure out how we're going to do it. But, but the point is, is that if, if we're not going to explore anything else, other than just, let's preserve it, then let's do that in the context that protects us moving forward without any obligation. That's why I think the straightforward, just purchase, it'd be done with it.
All right, Jake.
My, my understanding of, I mean, we've had the DNR come give a presentation on the land trust, and my understanding is, and it sounds like you maybe have had a different experience, but a collaborative process, where you say, this is what I want to allow for the land, and there are restrictions, but you can log it in a land trust, but you have to define that when you set up the trust. Or you can have it for, you know, other agriculture, you know, there's, there are many different ways to, so I don't find that overly restrictive, but I could be naive there, certainly inexperienced.
If I were just prioritizing, best case scenario is, if we make the decision, we're going to buy it, and that's what it seems, we want to, we want to own it, we want to protect it. That's the consensus. Then we conclude that, now what do we do? If we're going to buy it, number one would just be buy it outright. Number two option would be to enter into agreement with the land trust. That, that would be where I'd be coming from.
And my, you know, I like that. My fear is that we're gonna make this declaration, and, and then we'll just drag, drag Mr. Sheaf along for, you know, longer than he deserves, and so that's just.
We could put a, a time, a timeline on that.
Yeah, yes. Commissioner White?
Couple of things. A scientific and natural area designation, how does that happen?
I have no idea.
Because I know that through our property of where we, east end of the county, there's 40 or 80 acres, it's a scientific and natural area, and you can build nothing through there, though, I mean, you can walk through there, but you can't cut trails, you can't. And it just sits there, and has sat there for the last 40 years, you know, but what is, I don't, I just know that is some way to protect property, but I don't know what.
Deb, I, I think it's a, a little higher level than just a conservation easement. The DNR comes in, they sort of pre-select and identify, it's not that they initiate it, but, you know, privately, but there is a collaboration there, and it's, it has similarities, but in the, in the conservation easement, and David, you know, you're exactly right, it can go the whole gamut. This conservation easement, which I presume would be unchanged, but I'm actually open to if the county, and if the park wanted to do something else, but they've reviewed it, and, and they're comfortable with it, they've already accepted it, actually, the joint park has, as, as an addendum to the, to their per, property. But, I, I lost my train of thought there, but.
The SNA is, it has to be a significant, maybe endangered, a very unique parcel, and that's how it's classified, they have those.
So, you know, if, if you want to change it, but this is as, as flexible and open, essentially inconsistent with the park, as it, as it can be. It can't really, I suppose you could say, you can't go in and hike on it, but the intention was to connect to the superior hiking trail and campsite, you know, a few campsites. That's all, that's all it is.
Please go ahead.
We have some really cool, smart marketing people in this county, don't we? Let's market, market the bluff. Ask for the greater United States community to come and help protect. Help us buy this bluff. It's only 475,000 dollars. I mean, we need help, and the, undeniably, it is a piece of real estate that you will not find in a lot of different places. And I was just thinking about decades ago, having gone to Montana and done whatever, and then it would have been 30 years after that one trip, going past, I don't remember where we were, but visiting colleges out there, and that what used to be mountainsides, it was nothing but lights, just development everywhere. And there's no going back, you know, I mean, there, there land, it, and they're building up the mountainside, you could see that. So, I believe, we have marketing people in this county. So I believe, we have marketing people in this county, visit Cook County, they can market all sorts of people, and put it on K-11 news, get, get the TV stations up here, here's a, here's an opportunity. Well, everyone can buy a square foot of the bluff, like we did when we got a new, everyone can buy a brick, you can just say, pick it up, this is your piece of the bluff, and for $25, you can own a piece of real estate in Cook County.
I think Attorney Peterson said we actually, actually can't do that. We can't solicit, you know, we can't ask for, we can't ask for that. But a community member can do it on their own volition, which is what Commissioner Gamble was, was implying. And I do like the directness of it, as far as our intentions are concerned. I think it seems like, to your point, we're at a consensus, it's just how to. One other thing I wanted to add, and we've spent a lot of time here, and it's, it's, it's important.
Ten years incrementally.
Has it been that long this morning?
Is, you know, with the, the sawtooth bluff master plan of the regional park significance, all of that, that's a very long process. However, and I think there's potentially 1.2 million for a project, you can use that money to buy land for the project. And so that's an option, but it's a long process, and so that speaks to my fear that we're going to just drag along and trying to figure out how to do this. But I, I just want to put that in the back pocket.
That's why I proposed a contract.
Touche.
It's got an end date, it's yours until then.
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I appreciate the conversation. Let me ask John, how much time, given the fact you've been so gracious with us, how much time would you give us? Let's just say that, that under the discussion and the direction that we go and any action that we would take, if we said our commitment is to purchase it, how we do that, we don't know. If we're comfortable with the 475, and you're comfortable with the 475, there's no tax benefit, you probably used up every tax benefit you can, and any influence on that pricing, that how much time are you comfortable allowing us to determine how we're going to pay for it if we make a motion that our intent is to buy it? We just don't know how we're going to pay for it.
Well, Gary, these are inherently fraught for extension, extension, extension time. I think Tyson had mentioned, you know, towards the end of the year, you know, into the fall, you know, I think that would give an adequate amount of time for you guys, us, you know, I, I know maybe parks, but, but, you know, with respect to the park, I don't think that this needs to be held directly next to the park in terms of anything that's going on with that. This, this can be completely separate. And, you know, if the county requires it, adds it to the park, fantastic, you know.
And I think it just, it's an awareness on our part, that's why it's brought up.
I, I would say, you know, say December 1st.
Okay. So the question before the board then, as I see it, is that if, if we are under the impression, given the feedback, we've had the discussion we've had, and the length of this discussion over multiple years, that if, if we believe that the right decision is that we need to purchase it, then I would recommend that, that we would make a motion in good faith to purchase the property, and that we would have this timeline till December 1st to determine how we're going to pay for it, given the fact that you're comfortable with it. The only other component I mentioned previous is the component of price. If we're comfortable with the price, and given the fact that, that we have an individual that we employ to try to figure that out, but if we were to defer and say, let's get another appraisal to determine your price, this has nothing to do with development or anything else, if we as a board say, 475, that's 4,705 people that gave $10 would pay for it. If we went with a 25, that cuts that more than half. My point is that I think there is in partnership with an outside entity that has come before us, and people that are saying, we want to protect it, put your money where your mouth is, and help so that we make a decision that does not impact taxpayers, it in, it just impacts those people that say that this is valuable, and then we come up that money or a combination of the land trust, however that is. But I would be willing to make a motion with the understanding that we have, in good faith, that the board is in agreement to purchase the property, and we would have until December 1st to determine how we're going to pay for it.
So, so to be clear, you said you're willing to make a motion, is that the motion, or is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and I'm just, I'm just getting a, a preemptive, you know, if I'm willing to make the mo, I'll make the motion. I will make the motion that, that the board, given our discussion and the communications that we've received from the community, we want to protect that.
Yeah.
We want to protect the bluff, so I make a motion, we purchase it at the listed price, and we have until December 1st to determine how we're going to pay for it. How's that for responsible governance?
All right, there, there's a motion on the table as their support.
I just, should we have the addition, is the, is the possibility of a contract for deed would be on the table yet, too? I mean-
That would be the how it, how you're going to do it.
That is how it's offered for sale.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in support for the discussion, Commissioner Sullivan, you've been waiting very patiently, sorry.
So this is just discussion, but as we were talking, I looked up about scientific natural areas, and it protects land through techniques including acquisition, lease, or donation, conservation easements, or agreements with other units of government, and assistance with tax incentives. There are six criteria, diversity and quality of plant communities, occurrence or habitat of rare species, parcel size, location and connectivity to other protected land, potential for long-term management and enhancement, and factors such as threat of development. So it might fit.
Got till December to figure it out.
Yep.
Now, the other, the other thing I want to discuss is you said the listed price. What does that mean? Is that the asking price, or is that the arbitration sort of thing you're talking about?
Well, and because, you know, the party that's got vested interest in this has said to us 475,000.
So the asking price?
Yeah.
475,000.
The asking price, however you want to use the term adjective to qualify that, but John, if, if 475-
That's the price.
That's what he's asking us. So the motion is that the board is supporting the purchase of this property with all the input that has informed this decision at $475,000. Four hundred and seventy-five thousand, I was just trying to catch him off guard. The, that the, that we have till December 1st to determine how we're going to do that.
And so I'm comfortable with a motion with our intention to purchase. I think that for, as far as stewardship's concerned and governance, we should give that third-party, you know, valuation, rather than just saying, okay, 475, done, deal, you know, that I don't, I don't know that that's the, the way we should do that. Bob's got a comment, but, but yeah.
So, you know, Sheaf does have an appraisal that he had contracted, and then the end result on that is assuming 690,000, I think, with access?
Yes, Bob, that, but we've had another appraisal done since.
Okay.
And, and the development costs are much higher than $30 a foot for the road. You know, that was, well-
So my, my advice to the board is just that we, we need to do, put some steps in place to make sure that we're, you know, using the taxpayer dollars in the right way. Or, you know, if it's not taxpayer dollars, but coming to a purchase price, that makes sense, whether it be another appraisal that we mutually agree to, or, you know, getting an actual bid for the development cost of the road. I think that's a, a key component when I look at that old appraisal, I haven't seen the new one, but I, I do think that just the, the purchase price and the value component, there needs to be a, a little bit more attention to, in my opinion.
And are, are you willing, are you open to that third-party appraisal? I mean, you've had your appraisal, we've had our appraiser.
There's not many left that are able to do it. Bill Clemens would probably be about the only one that knows the market, because John's retired.
Well, maybe John would do it, he is kind of taking files in his doleage. I would be open to it, sure.
That's all, that's all I was asking, thank you. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and the development thing relates to the appraisal. In fairness, the development has to be looked at it, but given where we're headed with this, theoretically, that's not something that is going to relate to us in the final decision. It does when it comes to assessment to include that, because it's an either-or choice here, and you have to evaluate it on the basis if this one choice would include development, then you better look at it at its value relative to that. Given the fact that we're looking at getting this land right now, if there's agreement to bring in an agreed-to appraiser to make an appraisal, if I were in your position, I would say, I'm willing to do that if the county's willing to accept the findings of that appraisal. And if the appraisal comes at 690, now our price is 690. So we sort of need to know where we're at, but given what we've looked at on that, my feel for the cost of the appraisal and for the price that you put it at, if I were in your position protecting myself, I'd say the board needs to realize, if we're going to do this appraisal, then that will be your price. And we, we have that risk. That's my sense of it. And we've got something now that sort of qualifies that, do we not?
There is some room for a summary evaluation that simply confirms that, yes, this is not an outlier price, it's within the realm of reason, that would shorten up the cost of that appraisal, because you're probably looking at two or three grand for a third-party appraisal from anybody that's going to do work up here. The problem, just if you're not aware, is we don't have any appraisers left, they're all getting old and retiring. And this is a very unique market that takes an awful lot of study. If you watch the hearings on the condemnation cases for Highway 61, one of the reasons why the state of Minnesota got beat up so badly on their last and best offers, when I say that the final offers were sometimes as much as 1,000% greater than what the state offered, because their appraisers didn't know the market. They're all from the cities, they don't understand the uniqueness of the North Shore. And the local, the local commissioners who did said, if you don't know what you're doing, you shouldn't be practicing up here. So that's our problem, we don't have any appraisers left.
I, I will mention John Vegan. So Tim is aware that John was involved in this from the beginning. He, I used as an expert on conservation easements, I really wasn't an expert, I wanted him as an informed voice to talk to Molly and-
You might have a conflict, though.
Pardon?
You might have a conflict because of working for the land trust in the past.
Well, you know, I-
Talk about that either.
Yeah.
That's not necessary.
I, I, yeah, you might, Brady knows John Vegan, and you could, with a very quick phone call, determine whether he'd be wanting to do it or not. So it could be very quick.
Are, are you open to amending the motion to not including a price at this time? Like, I think this December 1st deadline is very generous and reasonable.
Well, you know, let, let me comment on Gary's presumption. It's extremely important and very insightful and generous, actually, on your part, Gary. I have said, kind of from the beginning on this, like, this goes back to Jake Keith and Jeff Colwell and all, and all, I said, you know, I, I'm not trying to squeeze the last, you know, blood drop out of this, this thing. And so, you know, I'm, I'm saying to you, you know, you don't have to feel at risk that if that appraisal comes in, and if you set the premise that it's the highest and best use, it's going to come in over 475. I mean, our appraisal, we used a present value spread out over four years of time, and it's like 700,000 to 800,000. So that's about as conservative a, an approach to the appraisal as you can get. They're discounting out, you know, four years, assuming the parcels aren't sold, to a, you know, for a, two per year over the four-year period, and discounting it at 9%. I mean, yeah, so, and, and we can share a copy of this with you, once, once it's done, it's, it's almost done. And, and that might short circuit the thing for you, maybe it's enough for you, I don't know. But it's, it's using current comps, you guys, you know the county, you can go to some of these places and render your own judgment, you know, on some of this, too. But I, I, I think that your, and Bob's point of trying to have an independent and doing your stewardship is, is valid. And how you go about that, maybe it's this, maybe it's something else, you know, some kind of a summary appraisal, it's for you to decide.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, thank you, John. So often our decisions are driven by an awareness that if we don't pass this now, prices are only going to get worse. And so we use that as an influence in our decision-making, let's do it while we can. And I, I don't think, I don't think, based upon what we know, and I, I mean, I don't know if Tim has anything to weigh in on this or not, he's shaking his head no, so-
I thought that was a nod, that looked like a nod to me.
Tim has an unusual way of saying yes, but anyway, what I would say is that we have to fear and, and make a decision, and, and certainly the input that comes from the department that's entrusted with this responsibility of evaluation, that it gets pushed here and there by a number of different agencies and entities, what your recommendation has to bear influence on us. I, I'm, I'm of a mindset, if, if it seems respectful, you know, Bob, I'm of a mindset to hold to my motion, and if it's not supported, that it could be reworded. There's two things to be mindful of. Do we think that the price is going to go down? And what will that contribute to time, which is another thing that always influences our decision. So I'm not saying, let's not rush this at this point in time without looking at the history, but, but I believe that the 475, and if the funding mechanisms, which is not going to be a burden, that is a commitment that is inferred in the motion and could be stated there, is not, this is not going to be on the backs of the taxpayer, that, that we can make this believing that we're comfortable with the 475 right now. And so that, my motion would stand that, that we would, we, I make a motion that we purchase the property at 475 with December as being the date at which we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
Well, we, we do have a motion and support. I, I don't think I can support that. I, I think I, I, I'm not comfortable with setting the price. I, I also have a hard time understanding how the, the, the taxpayer would not have an encumbrance here, there, there, I mean, already there is, just through our time, our, our professionals' times, it's, it's-
True.
I, I want to leave things as open, I, I think our direction is clear, but I don't, I, I, beyond that, I think there's still a lot that we need to, to figure out, but, but-
Well, well, the, the, there's recognizing that there, there's cost invested because there are time in this, but moving forward, stating that our intent is not to do this through levy dollars. If I were sitting out there and I were saying, do you believe what just happened? The county's going to purchase this, that could generate some revenue moving forward in tax base, and they're going to do it out of our pocket, how can that happen? And I'm saying, no, we need to, we need to find that middle ground that is the win-win-win situation, where we're saying, our intent is to do this because of the values that have been communicated to us and we feel as a board, and that's what we're supporting. We're also, we've been graciously given time to figure out how we're going to pay for it, but our intent in this is not to do it through the levy. It is to find some creative ways. And I believe that people who've been speaking in support of this believe it, that they'll go out and they'll turn the soil to generate the revenues to be able to do this, that may be in conver, con, combination with a land trust. But if- But if, if, if we move forward with the motion that says pending a new appraisal, then we need to define that new appraisal and how it affects us. Will that new appraisal be that we are willing to accept whatever that appraisal is? And if it's $690,000, that's our new price? Or are we going to say, "Let's do this for us to reassure that there were good stewards, and we have a gracious landowner that says, 'Even if it comes in at 690, I'll still stay at my 475.'" If I know that, then we'll go through the motion to ensure that we're good stewards, but on his back.
I think, I think Mr. Schief has communicated that he's comfortable with that risk, and it does not want to put the county at risk.
So, you're saying the 475 would hold? Well, then, I would amend my motion certainly because there's no risk. It's just a matter of stewardship, and we appreciate your graciousness in that regard. So, my motion is, "The board moves to purchase the property pending an appraisal that will reassure we're good stewards of this in setting the price, and that Mr. Schief has guaranteed that we would pay that 475, and we have till December 1st to make that decision as to how we will pay for it." If you're comfortable with the language of that.
The motion has been amended. Is there support for the amendment?
You bet. Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right. Motion support. Have we had any discussion yet, Bob?
I just want to ask one quick question about, are we going to specify who pays for the appraisal? I mean, I would say we need to order this thing immediately because it, it could be pushing up against December 1st for an appraisal like that.
Oh, how much?
Well, I mean, $5,000 is what I thought that was the, the kind of estimated cost for an appraisal of that magnitude. I also wanted to bring up another point that in my comp grid, comp number four, that property was purchased by an association of neighbors who didn't want asphalt plant. So, it's very similar to like what you're suggesting is that, you know, all these people down here that are going to have to look at it. Unless somebody steps up to pay for it, that's what's going to happen. And that's what, exactly what happened in that comp four on the grid that I had up off the Caribou Trail.
You need 475 people with $1,000.
I, I, because of the timing and because of the additional cost, and because it's going to end up where it's at anyway, the one thing is, is the stewardship responsibility, which I appreciate, it just building credibility into it. But given where we've at and what we've done, and the, the thing we're up against, which is time and the additional cost, which I think should be ours, I, I'm, I am comfortable. I am personally comfortable with the intent of paying the 475, purchasing the property with December, December 1st, December 31st. Let's make it the first because we need some money...
I can make it November 1st.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, so, what, what would you like to stay in that regard?
December 1st.
All right, December 1st. Yeah, to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And, and I would bypass the, and, and to the community, I'm certainly willing to ask any questions, but given the information we have and the outcome as it would be, it's an additional cost that builds in the integrity, which I'm always for. But if the end result is the 475 anyway, the big question is, do we think it's worth 475? And we can ask that. Well, no, we can't because if I make a motion, it passes, then we don't ask that question. We can wonder, but I don't know.
So, so we've got, is that another amendment to back this?
No, I'm just saying, based upon that new information, I may incline to want to go back to the original, but Jeanie has something to say.
I just want to clarify because it keeps getting referred to as a sale to the county, and I just want to make it clear that if the finding is that, as I believe it will be, the county cannot say, "Set up a GoFundMe or something," the county can also not then legally and forcibly contract with a third party to solicit donations for what the county couldn't do. So, I'm not saying there's not a solution, and I mean, I think that Mr. Schief and council are here today saying that they're willing to work with the county and to take time. So, we have time to explore the options, and that could be, you know, the equivalent result. But I just want to say that it may not be a, a purchase and a...
Yeah, that, that's a good point. That's a good point, Mr. Chair. I, I, the amendment, I think, based upon that information, should be that, as a board, I propose that the, the intent is that, it's not the county, that, but that the land will be purchased at the asking price of $475,000, and that we have until December 1st to determine how we're going to pay for it. But taking out the language says that the county will purchase it because it could be purchased by an outside entity that would then deed it to the county. So, the motion is that we, we agree that the land will be purchased at $475,000 with a December 1st determination as to how we will pay for it. How it will be paid for.
So, that, that's an amendment, again, to go back to 475, but to strike the county as the purchaser. Is there support for that amendment?
I'll support.
Okay. Further discussion on that? I don't think Attorney Peters, and correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think Attorney Peterson's point was, I think the point was to be cautious in, in what our expectations are as far as how we can get money. I don't necessarily think it was that we should leave it open-ended, that it isn't the county purchasing. And is that...
I think she was saying that the county, if we put in there the county, then I'm, and we might not be the purchaser, so it does open it up to options to explore that excludes the language in the motion, which says it's the county purchasing, and it might not be. That's why I pulled the county. The intent is to purchase at the 4, but it doesn't define us as being the purchaser, and that's why that the language is not "we" indicating us, but "it."
I mean, so we're making a motion that your property might be purchased? Like, that doesn't?
Here's the reality. It's enough to keep it off the market. So, when I get a phone call, I want to be clear about this. I get inquiries about this land. "What's going on?" We know you're John's attorney, and the answer is, "Well, we're working with the county to facilitate an acquisition there." I will keep saying that until December 1st.
The county will facilitate the purchase?
Whatever, whatever you want. It's a letter of intent which is non-binding. It's an agreement between two people who really don't have an agreement. Neither of them are in the position to have an agreement. It doesn't matter. But it's enough for us to see that you're going to help us find a funding source to make this happen.
We probably don't need a motion for that matter.
Technically, yes. It's a waste of time.
Well, yeah, technically, although after 10 years, you want to know whether there's any substance of the words that are being used.
Right. Or right now. I, so, so, again, I'm not comfortable supporting the 475. I think we should have another appraiser, but, but the current motion is 475, that somebody will buy it by December 1st, or figure that out.
We'll figure it out.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes three to one. Thank you very much for your time. I, I think you understand my dissenting vote, and I don't need to tie it's...
And I appreciate where, where that dissent originated, so, and thank you, Bob.
Thank you all.
All the investment in that. I think we need more than a 14-minute break.
My next meeting is almost over. Again, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
I need somebody to turn the remaining amount of water.
I didn't even bring my, I left it, and I know today it's going to say, "You forgot your water," so... Yeah, 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 yeah.
You have to follow that?
Yeah.
I wasn't intending to, but if we need to, then we need to.
I can think of all sorts of ways.
We can take a...
When we got a new library, we sold the old, we sold it brick by brick. I mean, for $10, you could have a brick of the old library.
Yes, please, Jana. We'll take a five-minute break.
Five minutes.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
We're back again. This is the regular meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners, Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, and now it's 12:56 PM. We're now on to, oops, I scrolled too far. Item 10, Land Services, North Shore Waste, Hovland Transfer Station Conditional Use Permit. Good day.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. The item for you is the Hovland Transfer Station Conditional Use Permit. This application was heard before the Planning Commission for the public hearing earlier this month, and we received no written correspondence when we did the public noticing for this application. There was one individual present for the public hearing who primarily had concerns as to the location of where the transfer station was going to be built out and its proximity to the fire station tank. We discussed that that was not going to be an issue, and then they had no other concerns. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed findings. I should also add that the Chair did disclose that he may have a conflict of interest, so he did not vote. However, he did facilitate the Planning Commission meeting as the Chair and provided some insight into some tree removal type questions with his familiarity of the site. Overall, the Planning Commission felt that this was a good addition to the area. The lack of negative comments seemed that the Hovland community was in support of this buildout, and this is a part of the North Shore Waste larger waste plan for the county is kind of a hub-and-spoke model where the Grand Murray site is the primary site, and then there would be sites in Hovland and Tofti to be bringing materials to the Grand Murray site and then sorted and sent out of the county. And with that, there's some conditions included in your report. Four conditions of approval primarily indicating conformity with other state and federal requirements. This is a permit by rule facility, so when we're talking about conditional use permits, they do transfer with the property, and so we want to be clear about quantifying that use as to how much growth would be needed before it's otherwise considered, so that permit by rule kind of quantifies the site naturally. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. This was a unanimous recommendation for approval by the Planning Commission with those conditions.
Thank you. Another, we've been talking about this for a while, so I can't imagine there are questions, but please, if there are, we should address those now. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Campbell?
No, it sounds pretty straightforward to me.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, I was at the Planning Commission meeting, thought the discussion was very thoughtful. There was some concern about tree screening, and those trees have spruce budworm anyway. I don't think it'll be an issue with any construction that's being done on the site. So I would make a motion to approve the resolution with the conditions recommended by the Cook County Planning Commission for the CUP for a permit by rule transfer station for municipal solid waste, recyclable materials, and demolition waste at 6023 North Road in Hovland.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. I have a motion, is there support?
I'll support that.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Motion and support. Any further discussion there? Hearing or seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting.
Yeah, yeah, it's nice to see you sitting back there.
Gives comfort. Moving on to item 12 now, attorney. The first item is the mutual lease and settlement agreement with RSNH.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think probably the members of the board are more familiar with the work that was done than I am. This predates my time, but there was work 10, 11 years ago done by RSNH pursuant to master agreements that were existing at the time. There were concerns over how the work was done and some grant concerns. There was a letter sent to RSNH back in 2020 and a number of tolling agreements while the parties tried to reach agreement. The board had previously approved a settlement number, and then this is just the accompanying mutual release. It's limited in scope to the claims that were addressed in the letter. Also states that, you know, there are no known other issues at this time, but it is limited in scope to the claims addressed in that 2020 letter. My understanding is that payment will be made forthwith if the board approves this.
Thank you. Any questions for Attorney Peterson? Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeanne, under point six, which is the real estate taxes. Can you clarify? It says that the leasers shall remain responsible for all assessed land and building value taxes.
If we're jumping ahead to North Shore Waste, I can address that. Did I jump ahead?
No, no, we're still in the mutually.
Am I in the wrong one?
Yeah, this is.
I looked at here.
We're on this one here.
Yeah, this is the ground lease for North Shore Waste.
Are we not dealing with the ground lease?
No.
We moved this one out of the.
Yeah, here.
Okay, I'm sorry, if, I just looked at here. I thought we were dealing with the ground lease.
Moved this out of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, my apologies then.
No, no worries.
Okay.
It's just a question I had relative to that particular document.
So upcoming question there. Any other questions for Attorney Peterson regarding the RSNH agreement settlement? Looked like it is their motion. Commissioner Sullivan?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the mutual release and settlement agreement with RSNH.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion here? Long in coming and appreciate your work on this, even though it predates your tenure.
That's what it is. Thank you.
Very happy to put this behind us. Brady, is there anything you wanted to say? Are we toasting or anything?
No, it's just, it's nice to have it over. We're not at home, but it's, we waited a long time for it, so.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item B is the North Shore Waste ground lease agreement. Attorney Peterson?
Thank you, Commissioner. So this would be the actual ground lease agreement in order for the county to lease the real estate owned by North Shore Waste upon which the transfer station will be built and then leased back to North Shore Waste to manage. That's the general overview. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for getting me on the right page here. The, yeah, the question just was under the real estate point there is that the leasers shall remain responsible for all assessed land and building value taxes.
Correct. So that North Shore Waste as a property owner would be responsible for the land taxes, and then accepted from that would be anything attributed to the actual transfer facility. So the building to be built, if that is assessed any taxes, and we don't anticipate that it would be, but if it were, North Shore Waste is saying we're not responsible for those, those taxes because that is, in essence, a county building that they're just running the transfer station out of.
Right, and that's, that's where my question came in, is that it was just looking at and saying that if, if in fact the building is ours, then in the language, it's saying that the building value taxes. Is it because, for the least premises, that the leasur, which is North Shore, yeah, and it says that they shall remain responsible for all assessed land and building value taxes, and I would have understood it to mean only the land, but not the buildings because we own the building?
Yes, in the event that they need small structures or buildings, outbuildings have been contemplated, so if you have a little pay station or something else.
So it's independent of the building that we own.
Correct, yep.
Okay, and that's where the clarification. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Campbell, and thank you, Attorney Peterson. Any other questions? Any motions? Commissioner Sullivan?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ground lease as leasing from Lessor North Shore Waste to facilitate construction and operation of solid waste transfer station.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion, is there support? Commissioner Campbell supports. Thank you very much for the discussion. Lots of ins and outs, long time in coming. Thank you all very much for working on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item C is the construction management contract for the transfer station.
Are you going to hang out? You are almost out of here. So this would be the management agreements, pretty much boilerplate for these larger projects. One thing to note would be that, I think we got it in here, that the approvals would be made by both Dustin Hanson as President for North Shore Waste and Brooke Lassard for the county, and that's important, so that the building gets constructed in a way that is beneficial to the county, but also that Mr. Hanson, knowing the business of North Shore Waste and being there for the day-to-day operations, will also have input on that.
Commissioner White?
I have a question about change orders. It's in this document, I believe. Who verifies the change orders, like the cost, like material cost increase? Is it Dustin or is it the county that reviews, just sees that there's a, sees the receipts for increase in costs?
Both are required to receive notice.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner White. When I looked at the language in some of these contracts, and you see that, that with the exception of additional costs, this is the quote, "With the exception of additional costs that come because of change orders or whatever." To the extent that we've done our due diligence and we plan these things out, we've anticipated the best we can, because as we know, contractors look for the change order, and we, we want to try to prevent that. That's all on the planning process that determines whether that happens or not. And I, I think, you know, with the combination of the stewardship and working in this project, that we've tried to eliminate any of that vulnerability moving forward. Not that there aren't some things you incur, but if it's on their part, not our part because we decided we want to change a wall or something, then that's good stewardship moving forward. So I, I agree with that, and that's what came to mind to me, is that that caveat is always there, and it, it's a place where we're really vulnerable unless we've done good planning on the front end, so.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a good question. Just moving forward, something that, you know, the people that have been involved should probably have a conversation about. You know, we hope that there are no change orders. I think the understanding with the architect and the contractor is, you know, they'll send stuff from me. I can confirm that the work got done. I send it to Brooke. Brooke kind of confirms that as well, and then that would go off to Brady for payment. But if we are in the situation where there, there are some needs for changes, I guess how that, that gets addressed? But maybe that's something we can meet as a group and bring that back to the board if, if something changes.
And Mr. Chair, sometimes when you're looking at a building like this and it's something new to us, the, what we do as a service is not new to us, but in this facility, that's new to us. And so when we talk with other entities that are billing, have built similar to us, we learn from them, what would you have done different? What did you find out you ran into? And those things help inform that decision, so we make more knowledgeable or informed decisions in the planning process.
All right. Any other questions or any motions?
Make a move, a motion to approve the construction management agreement, materials and labor equipment with Johnson Wilson Contractors.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion and support, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Sullivan respectively. Any further discussion here? Hearing or seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you. You can go back and dry up your parking lot.
That moves us on to administrator, administrator updates.
All right, Commissioners. It's been a long day, so I'll try to be succinct. Couple things first. Forwarded to last week, an update about the administrator search, and as of last Thursday, which would have been nine days into the process, we had received 10 applicants, and Pat had identified five of those as very well-qualified, including one who has local ties. So I think, you know, we're going to be, this will be open for another few weeks, so this is a, it's a good start. We had also had, he had also sent some ideas about suggested questions, things he's starting to kind of throw out there as a way to maybe get at some of the other, the other qualities that we've discussed around values and the way people work with each other. And I'm not sure what the best way to do that is. I think when, you know, there's some certain level of risk to having that in an open discussion and agreeing to what the questions are going to be, because candidates listen and can prepare in a different way. So I, I don't know how you'd like me to proceed. I mean, I guess if you send me your individual questions or comments, I can aggregate those and send them to Pat, and he can keep sending them back for us to review, and we can, we can do that. Let me know how you want to do that.
Commissioner?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, as I mentioned before, this, the questions, in, in previous experience in dealing with hiring county administrator, we were constantly reviewing our questions to make sure that the things that we identified were important to us, that our questions mined that information out, so that our evaluation is based upon things that we identified, whether it came through, you know, the input that comes from staff or the community or our own personal experience. I think, Commissioner Sullivan, you forwarded some questions, and I forwarded some suggested written screening questions. One thing that's new here is, at least, you know, from my previous experience, we did, we did video interviews, but there was more work that was, that prefaced that. And in the situation with you had applied, we had a questionnaire that they filled out that questionnaire. Once we scored that questionnaire, then we determined who we were going to do on video conferencing, then following that, then we brought in for the final interview with candidates. And I think we should look at the questions that, if, if we're going to use the video interviewing, that what questions do we want to ask there, and then what questions would we ask our finalists? And if those were submitted, each of us wanted to submit those, that there would be that refinement process. The way it happened for us is with the, and, and I'm not following it because that's the way we did. It's, I see merit in how we did it, because we are constantly reevaluating whether we had the right questions to ask. And so I, I would say that, again, we just say, well, here's the new list. What do you think? And then the Commissioners say, well, I, I don't know that we need to ask this one, or I think we should add this one, kind of thing. And we can go back to the things we've identified that we think are important, that we're trying to mine out in this process. So initially, I think that those screening questions that come in, if we're going to do it through the video conferencing, he has five, if five, six, whatever it is, I don't know how, and maybe this was sent to us, but I don't know how they are presented to the candidates. In other words, if, if he's saying, here's some questions, you each have this much time, and this is how you go about doing it. I, I don't know that I've seen what he's saying as a directive to them, but I would like to see each of us as Commissioners just sit in, and we're going to find that there's going to be some overlap, but then that's sort of a consensus that this is important, and I think that's why we, we say, yeah, definitely this. So I'd like to see us forward questions to you, and then we come up with a refined list.
Okay. Yeah, I feel really comfortable with that as well, given the fact that before, I know I've communicated through Commissioner Storley and through former interim administrator Watkins, and I felt it was very effective. Pat did a great job of looking at, at input and, and coming up with things, and so I think Commissioner Campbell, you're right on that we can submit things as Commissioners and feel very confident that it will be reviewed and evaluated.
Yeah, and just for, for the perspective on how the, the questions are presented to candidates with the video interviews, they are given one at a time. They have one minute to read and think about, and then the recording starts. And so it's not a whole lot of time, and then once that's done, they can move on to the next one, and so fairly intense.
And I think that process, then, in other words, if you understand the context in which questions are going to be answered, there are some questions that we would want more time devoted to than questions that we ask that you only have a minute to respond. So that should influence what we select for this and what we select for that.
Absolutely. And that, that does reinforce, for me, the idea that we don't necessarily want to publicize what the questions are going to be in advance for participants.
Think on their feet.
Yep. I, I, this is a, a job where often you are in the position of having to respond quickly to something, and so somebody having a lot of information beforehand can certainly.
Skew.
Skew their response. So, yeah.
And do we want to say when we want to see those by?
You know, sure, I can, I can check in with him to say when.
Yeah.
When you need those. I would say sooner rather than later. Because I think, I'll send them to Pat, he'll probably send me a response back, and I'll want you all to, to review that, so.
Maybe if you check with him and then just send us an email reiterating what we've agreed to.
Okay.
In this timeline.
Okay, I can certainly do that.
And so then those questions would still be public then, right?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. If it comes through the, you know, if it's facilitated, whatever, then.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not, you guys are not going to be back and forth between.
Very good.
This is not a serial conversation. You just send it to me, and I'll send it to him, and then he'll send the, you know, the, the questions back out, so there's not like a back and forth.
We'll do it, we'll do it by the way of bread comes.
Yeah.
Very good.
I don't want to make Jean nervous in terms of any kind of public meeting violations or anything like that. Okay, so real quickly on the CIP updates, BKV mentioned the possibility, and they've talked about this before, about holding a public open house on May 22nd. Henry will be here that day at the board meeting. What they had proposed was maybe setting up several stations that might have sample materials, like for exterior interiors. They would have detailed maps or detailed plans that people could look at. They might have other ones about the budget or the process, and that people could work through that. What, what I, I guess what I'm asking for today is, do you think there's still value in that for the public? It's approved or moving on? So I should go ahead and schedule that with them? Yes?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair.
Please.
If at all possible, I mean, anything that we, if we, that we do, if we could connect it to value, so I, I would think in that presentation, all of the, you know, hands-on things, but I think, why are we doing this? Why am I looking at this? Because it's connected to the value, what we've created in this facility that is servicing the community. So if we could have that some way identified, that would be obvious, whether on a placard or an easel or something. All of this connects to, this is the value created in the effort we're doing. I think that would add benefit.
Okay. I will mention that to Henry. I'm doing that. I'll say, I have one last thing. Back when I was in the seat before, in one of my five-year, you know, interim stints, every five years, one of the things that we, we had a real problem with was our providing good janitorial services at the Y. every five years, one of the things that we, we had a real problem with was our providing good janitorial services at the Y. We were, we were having trouble, like hiring somebody that was there at night, that was unsupervised. We ended up having lots of overtime there, and when I sat down and figured it out, we were paying about $160,000 a year to provide for substandard janitorial services at the Y. So during that time, what we did is we worked with the school, and they had put together a contract with us, kind of a joint powers agreement, where, where the school hired an extra person to be on their team. And then they, they, that person was available all during the day, so if somebody came in and broke a bottle of something, or spilled something, or toilet backed up, there was somebody right there in the same building to do that. And then at the end of the day, when the, when Tom Nelson's team would come through and clean, they would, his whole team would be, you know, as they moved through the building, would be there in the facility, was getting one good cleaning a day. Though, the, the school, it was an advantage for them because they had an extra person there during the day. And we, the way the contract was, is that we were paying around $90,000 a year, which was the cost of that extra employee. So we were saving a lot of money, and the school had benefit, and the quality of the service went way up. Which everybody was happy about, and somehow in the last few years, that contract went away. But
They lost the employee.
Yeah, they lost the employee, and I think there were some personality things that might have been going on, I'm not sure. But Brooke is kind of in a similar spot again. He's got one person on contract that's doing that at night, level of service is questionable. There's no one supervising this person, so we're not really sure if they're, they're full-time or whatever. So Tom Nelson, the school's maintenance person, approached Brooke and said, "We're willing to pick this up again, and we'll do it." And I caught, I talked to Chris Lindholm, and Chris said, "We'll do it for the same price we were doing it five years ago. We'll just do it at the same, same level, just pick up the same contract and do that." I think there's an opportunity for us again to get, to get this service done at the same price or a lower cost than we currently are at a higher level of service. So what I wanted to know is if you all are in favor of me pursuing this and bringing this, having Jean review the, the previous contract, see if there needs to be any changes to it, and bring it back to you.
Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Originally, the, the agreement, the contract agreement was that, that the janitorial services would be provided by the Y, the school, whatever. And then we found out that, that they basically came and said, "We really can't do this." And then it fell on Brian, and then so Brian was going, "What?" And then we, and we had the, the financial context in which to evaluate how much we were contributing towards costs overall at the Y. And so when it came and said, "Well, we should hire a person," and I said, "If those monies come out of those, that commitment and not add on, we'll do that." So this has been an ongoing issue relative to managing costs and managing to what we get for it. In a presentation that would come before the board for decision-making, I would like to see, I would, I would like to identify some of the points that you've just said, the pros and the cons, if you wanna look at it that way. But you say, "This is the cost savings, and, and we reduce," so that the con, the pro is, "We're reducing that cost and we're getting this service." Not trying to complicate it, but trying to synthesize it into something that informing us as well as the community why we're doing what we're doing.
Right.
Yeah, if I could see that, I would, I would appreciate it.
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
For me, yeah.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. Okay, well, I will send, Jean, I'll send you over a copy of the previous contract. And I think we can, I was, I was surprised they weren't gonna raise the price at all from five years ago. And I believe it's actually less expensive than our current contract with the contractor we're using, so.
Yeah, and that's why looking at those comparables is
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And I would have to say, because Molly and I worked a lot on the Y contract, trying to clean it up. It was one of the worst contracts I'd ever seen in my life.
Yeah.
But there are some pieces of that that were just locked into.
Page numbers? No, nevermind.
Anyway, but we, we did clean it up quite a bit, but it's, it's, there's still some things that I wish the county wouldn't have agreed to a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah.
That's really kind of all I, all I have. I would say this is my fourth week, and I'm still here.
Yeah.
So, and it's, I think, going pretty well so far. Appreciate your support.
Go home, play your guitar, mellow out, and then come back for another round, you know.
I have a, a budget meeting this afternoon, so.
Oh yeah, that's right, yeah.
That's right.
And there's Parks and Trails tonight, so.
That's what I've got.
Thank you. We are now on to employee concerns, Commissioner Concerns, Commissioner Reports, Meeting Updates. Anybody have Commissioner Sullivan?
Certainly. So recently, the HRA met and talked a little bit about the heights. I believe I had mentioned earlier that they're, they were trying to find a place to locate all the modular units that are going to be part of that 36-unit apartment complex. They were trying at the airport. FAA approval is very difficult to get for something like that. They have found another location, they're actually using the Tom Tabota site across the road. So that has been taken care of by the HRA. Also, they took action on the parcel that this county board conveyed to the HRA back in January, so that Hamilton Habitat can build several cluster homes around the area that's just north of the ballpark. So that is in the works. Cook County Coalition of Lakes Association met and had a very lively discussion regarding some of the bills that are before the legislature. I attended the AMC Solid Waste Committee. We had 15 Commissioners and 18 staff from transfer stations and solid waste systems throughout Minnesota meet. And we talked about the role of resource recovery in a solid waste management system. And of particular interest is the fact that we're going to be able to tour one of those facilities at our policy committee meeting, which is in September in Alexandria. So we'll be reviewing and visiting the Pope Douglas Joint Powers Solid Waste Facility. And then there was a great deal of discussion about the concerns related to lithium batteries that are showing up in our waste stream. That is something that we really need to educate our public about, because there have been multiple fires in Minnesota as a result of that. So we wanna make sure that that is something that we, again, educate our public about. And then lastly, or almost lastly, Cook County Historical Society has filled all of their vacancies. If you recall, they have four employees, they lost three, and all three of those have been filled. So we're very, very excited to be up and running with both a manager and the JHP Gallery Manager as well. And then lastly, the Airport Advisory Commission has three individuals, Rodney Roy, Mike Kieske, and Tyler Howell, who are at the Minnesota Airports Conference starting this evening. They'll be there for two and a half days. One thing that is very interesting is, this has always been a conference where the FAA has been there. We had hoped for discussion about our master plan. And due to changes at the federal level, the FAA is not allowed to attend that conference. So there will be no members of the FAA there. There will be people from MinDOT Aeronautics, but that was really a shock to us. And then for your calendars, another May date, May 12th, is going to be here in this room, our open house for the Airport Master Plan, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It is an open house where you'll be wandering about. All of our tables will be pushed off to the side, there will be 15 different easels showing different aspects of the master plan and getting feedback, and an opportunity to respond to questions that the public may have. But we are advertising that in social media and also in our local newspapers. And again, May 12th, it is a Monday from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
I suggest you purchase Balsam Gliders as handouts. Little nostalgia.
There you go.
That's a good idea.
I like those, they're fun.
Any other reports or meetings?
I do have an issue not meeting so much, but I've received, I personally received a miss, a letter from the AEOA requesting, that they're seeking funding from the counties for the, a new building for the AEOA's regional hub. It's for a new building, and they were asking from Cook County. Oh, of course, I can't find it quickly. Irrelevant. Oh, it's, last year, last year we were, and we did not pay anything last year. But last year, we were requested to send them $31,056 and to support the services that they provide in Cook County. We did not send them anything. This year, they are asking for a 24, 25% reduction of $23,292 to support the new building in the hub for the AEOA. I conferred with Rina, I didn't know what to do. I had a meeting with them, it seemed like more than what one Commissioner, but I did explain to the person that at this point, Cook County hasn't met about this, but we do not have the funding at this point.
There's no budgeted funding.
And we're not budgeted for this. So I said, "No." But then I, then they said, "We would really welcome an opportunity to come up and speak to your board at any time to talk about what AEOA does." So to that end, I would like to get back to them. If we want to extend an invitation for them, we're not gonna pay them. But extend, extend an invitation for them to come to Cook County, to meet with the board. We get a lot in the county from the meals for the, through the hub and the transportation, and those are the big things that we get from, from them from this county. So how does everyone feel about an invitation to them?
Yeah, that'd be great. Scott Sahorik has, has been before the board before and given a presentation. I think at that time, he was not the executive director, but he was in charge of housing.
He is now.
And was, would this be at the committee of the whole?
It could be at a regular board meeting too, I think.
Yeah.
Be either one.
I mean
If you got a layboard meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I think that's a good thing, but we can also just read their annual report, and it can, it really summarizes what, what they do, but maybe not for Cook County specifically. When I said on that they had a, a separate county report that they could hand out and distribute.
Yes, but I think what they were looking for was the personal interactions.
Oh sure, yeah, well, that'd be great.
And they'll come here.
Yeah, yeah.
I can, I can do that on a committee of the whole.
Yeah.
If you think that's more appropriate, so.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, a lot of organizations that, you know, we participate with, but if they're gonna come in, it should be tailored specifically to Cook County, as Commissioner Milne said. Because we can look at it in the broad sense, but let's just say the job corps. We've had discussions about the job corps. I wanna, I wanna see where that translates to us as Cook County, not your broad, you know, benefit to the Arrowhead region.
Sure.
And so when it comes to Cook County, if they could come and show and actually support it with numbers, let's say how many meals, you know, how many miles, and whatever else. And certainly, at Harborview with an elderly population, I mean, their transport is there all the time. It's, it's a lifeline to, to the community. So there's real value there, but if they can tailor it to us, tangible to us, that would be helpful.
And the meals, the meals on wheels.
Yeah.
That's a big deal.
Which we get as well.
It's a huge deal.
Anything that, that AEOA is related, you know, to our county would be great.
So, Rina, do you want to extend this invitation? Or I'll find out when would be when they
I'm happy to do that, but can you send me who I should be extending it to?
Scott Sahorik. Yeah, also, I just wanna point out, pretty sure the AEOA's budget is larger than Cook County's. And St. Louis County is
Oh, they're doubling, at least doubling it.
Yeah, and so it's, it's really hard, it, the services are extremely important, but it's really hard for us to throw some pennies at them, and maybe it's just the gesture, but
But it's a lot of pennies for us.
It's a lot of pennies for us, that's what I'm saying, but for them, it's just like, and so the impact for us, giving to them, you know, it's just like, I have a, gives me pause.
Are you referring to the fact of what they're asking relative to what we get?
What they're asking relative to what we have.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, I mean, just qualifying that, yeah. Yeah, we're just not saying that there certainly isn't benefit here, it's just our ability to pay.
Absolutely, absolutely. Commissioner Sullivan.
Maybe, I was thinking maybe what you meant was, the impact to us to give them that much money
Right.
has a much smaller impact to them receiving it, because their budget is bigger.
Exactly, that's exactly.
Which is not ignoring the value, it's just the reality.
And I would also wonder if this isn't the type of thing that might go under if, if we finalize a discretionary funding policy. It seems like this aligns with some of our goals in our health improvement plan, and that it would align with that process very well, which would go through Public Health and Human Services. And requires that they make an application just like other organizations.
Yeah, that would probably be the most appropriate at this point, the only funding we would have available.
Yeah.
Yeah, to that point, I would say that, like organizations, you know, I triple RB, or if it's like A. Johnson or any other funding organization, their board makes a decision on how much, based upon their, you know, investments and everything else. They're gonna allocate that funding year in grants. And so we should look at it in that context, which means that every grant that comes, we don't necessarily give it, no matter where it falls under. It's a matter of prioritizing based upon what we have that year, based upon submissions, and then responding.
Commissioner.
And then, however, if they were, they were directed to the Public Health and Human Services, they'll be in competition with the, with the hub, which has like this much money. And they have like this much money, and so
That organization or, or the group of individuals that's evaluating that would need to look at that. And that is part of the paperwork
That's exactly right.
that you submit with your application, so they see, what is your operating budget? What percentages?
This is the umbrella under which the hub functions.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's not to say that you couldn't, it was a suggestion that it might meet the criteria.
Sure.
Any organization that meets criteria under that context is going to be in competition, but if they do a better job than others, then that's where it's at.
More resources.
It's not saying it has to be there, but it, it seems like it aligns.
Do you know, I had heard that Head Start was ending?
Yeah, it may be, yes.
And so that's under AEOA and such a huge part of their
Yep.
their work. I was just, I was just scrolling through some of the last packet I received from them and just trying to get a grip on all of that, but
And I think in that regard, because it, it's, it's a step back in saying, "We're gonna put a hold on things until we evaluate the effectiveness, and then move forward with those we think are most effective." And, and so I don't, I don't think that decisions are being made overall as to, this is written off. It's just, "We need to stop and we need to evaluate." And I think when you look at the state relative to its budget, if, if we see things, especially in the era of, of human need, human resource, Public Health and Human Services, that, that sometimes decisions are made here, and you think, "Oh my goodness, the impact on people over here. How can you be cutting your budget back with its impact here? And yet shifting your money over here?" And that's why values, ideology, these kinds of things, you'll see that, that happen. We just, and in our role, it's a matter of us evaluating, and it's like you say, Rina, it's all about services and what we can afford to do and what we can do effectively.
Yeah, and prioritizing them.
Yeah.
Which are the ones that are gonna have the most impact? And by that, I mean the most people and the most impact on their lives, you know.
Yeah.
And by that, I mean, most people and the most impact on their lives, you know? It's going to be a time when we have to really look hard at the, well, this is a really good idea, and it would be a nice thing to do. I mean, we're going to have to look at those things really hard.
And the other thing, when we're looking at options in that regard, is where we can partnership or where we have duplication of effort that could be more directed. And when I had talked to other commissioners, you know, before, I said, what do you do about this? They said, oh, we had to give that up a long time ago. Why? It's a matter of priorities. We just can't fund everything. So we just have to have our criteria and evaluate with a discipline.
I agree.
And AEOA has a lot of services that aren't necessarily in Cook County as well. And, you know, they try to do the home services as much as they can here. They run into obstacles, though, because of our property values. And so there's an impression, you know, there's a, there's a, I think, a comprehensive understanding at the higher levels in AEOA, but there's also an impression that Cook County is very wealthy and that we can, we have the money to, you know.
But we have quite a diversity.
Yeah, just spend $200,000.
Exactly. We do have a lot of wealth. We also have a lot of disadvantaged people that.
And those demographics are, you can look at them, and you can understand how we are comparatively and say, this is something we have to address, so. And I always say, when we're talking about community, you can't use the word "community" unless you understand what that word means, which means that you have a diversity that comes in demographic, both in age, in the amount of money we have, and interest, and family structure. I mean, so we, if we are trying to serve with inclusivity, we need to recognize community means there's diversity within our community, and we can't serve some at the expense of others, so.
Wait, what?
No, we can't.
That's what we're doing?
I know, but I mean, it's a charge in front of you.
Uh-uh. Any other meetings? Okay.
Catch them at the, probably help.
This is not our last chance here.
No. It was last week, but we'll do that.
Okay, I was going to say otherwise.
Oh, it's really exciting, though. We can do it another time.
I.
You're supposed to set us up by just saying, there's some meetings I went to. You can't wait to hear what I got to say, but I'm waiting. I'm waiting to see it.
Well, I mean, I don't want to lose the thread here.
You won't, you won't.
Okay, okay. That moves us on to meetings to note. Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee is today at 3:00 via Zoom. Parks and Trails Committee is today at 5:00, both here as well as Zoom. Firewise is the 24th Zoom. Soil and Water is the first at noon here. PHHS Advisory Council is May 6th via Zoom. Community Leadership Committee, May 8th at City Hall, and it's at 5:30. And then our regular meeting is next, or Tuesday, May 13th at 8:30 a.m. There's some memos there, lodging tax comparison as well as sales tax comparison. Anything else anyone needs to share? And then we're adjourned. Thank you.